Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Ersin Demisi is the executive director at the Raindrop Turkish House. He's going to lead us in the invocation. If you'd just come forward, Ersin, and ask words. I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand at this time?
Let's pray. Oh Lord of Eden, you created us from a single soul, that of Eden and EU. Made us into tribes and nations so we may know one another. Make us not deviate from the path of paradise again and spare us the temptation of Satan. Indeed, we know that he is our ultimate enemy. Make us see one another as children of Eden and grant us to see that racism, bigotry, and injustices as evil fruits of the forbidden tree. Lord of Noah, guide us to understand that although we might have come from different arcs, that we might have crossed a different sea, we are now together on the promised land. We all pray to Almighty God to guide us to a world where no one cures in its darkest corners, she wiring of fear of one another. Lord of Joseph, open our hearts and minds to hear your voice, speaking peace, tolerance, and love. Help us to learn forgiveness, kindness, and greatness of minds and hearts. Oh Lord, just like you aided Joseph, aid us to forgive those who have wronged us, to pardon those who have oppressed us, and aid those who have forsaken us. Lord of David, help us to search deep within our souls so we may hear, feel, touch the divine harmony of your love, your wisdom, and your justice. Lord of Moses, help us stand against injustices with no fear, for indeed, we know that if we stand up for justice, you Lord will be with us. We know that we are never alone if you are with us. Lord, we are not praying for you to draw on our fears of this world, rather to keep them, rather to keep them flawed so that they can find their way back to you. Lord of Jesus and Mary, guide us to a unified Oklahoma, our own Jerusalem. The seed of God among the red clay of our land, help us feed hungry, house the homeless, help us cure the sick. Lord of Muhammad, you aided him as an orphan so he adopted the world. You guided him the truth, help us see the truth as the truth, and grant us the determination to follow it, and help us see false hood as false hood, and grant us the strength to avoid it. You taught him to forgive his enemies, help us forgive ours. Together, our uplifted prayers will shine the way to the kingdom of heaven. We ask you, Lord, to answer our prayers in your divine, merciful, compassionate name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On May 20th and again on May 31st, our community was hit by some severe weather. And we were benefited by so many organizations and we have tried our best in the last few weeks to try and recognize those that came to need under extreme conditions and in some cases, at the snap of a finger. And we are doing that again this morning. I'm going to ask the people with the VOTEC Center to come up here. Here we go. We have a citation, let's the clerk read it as we get set, and this is the Moore-Norman VOTEC Center.
Whereas thousands of residents of Oklahoma City and surrounding communities were devastated by an F-5 tornado and severe storms on May 20th, 2013. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City pauses to remember those who perished in the storms and those grieving the loss of loved ones. Whereas the call to provide immediate lifesaving assistance after the tornado hit was answered courageously, not only by those trained for such events, the local emergency response agencies, including Oklahoma City Police and Fire, but by individuals from outside and inside the devastation, teachers, residents, and business owners. Whereas in the days and the weeks that followed, churches, schools, and other organizations reached out to those affected by the storms to provide day-to-day resources and assistance in rebuilding their homes and lives. Whereas Moore-Norman VOTEC South Campus opened its doors to the city of Oklahoma City staff for the operation of a storm recovery city outreach office. Whereas Rock Assembly of God and St. Andrews United Methodist Church graciously welcomed displaced residents and Oklahoma City emergency responders for weeks after the storms, offering their facilities and volunteers for the recovery efforts. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby express sincere appreciation to the leadership, staff, and members of the Moore-Norman VOTEC School, Moore Schools, Rock Assembly of God, and St. Andrews United Methodist Church for their partnership with the city and their tireless support in the storm recovery efforts.
Let's show our appreciation to both of these groups. And as I've learned, in the hours after the May 20th tornado, there were some people displaced and just needed a place to land on that particular night. They opened their doors and allowed some emergency sheltering to take place. And then even long after the storms had taken place, federal officials were in town and needing place to handle the permitting and a lot of other items. Because City Hall and our city businesses are so far removed from some of the storm damaged places, it was more convenient for them to set up a lot of the city permitting offices down on their campuses, make it more convenient for those that were most impacted. And so Jay and Jeanette, thank you both for really doing whatever we asked and perhaps going beyond whatever anyone would have asked. And people in Oklahoma responded incredibly well during these times. But on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City, thank you all very much.
Just briefly, I want to tell you, we, at my campus and at our district, 123 students, which are high school and adult students, were totally displaced with no communication from Edmond all the way to Norman and South Oklahoma City. We had students and staff that had no clue if their families were still alive or their homes were still standing. So we did an immediate shelter and opened up for all night long, including bedding and food, and just those immediate needs that we needed that very day. But at our north campus, our South Penn campus, Jay kicked in a few days later, and I'm going to let him tell you what he provided to those people in need.
Thank you, Jeanette. Mayor Cornet briefly described it already, but what we did at the South Penn campus, we were blessed to not be hit by the tornado. And we thought it was going to hit us, but obviously, it didn't. The whole area around us was total devastation. So there are a number of residents, hundreds of Oklahoma City residents, homes were destroyed. Rather than having to come downtown after the insurance had kicked in, apply for permits, they were able to come onto our campus. Part of the outreach effort for Oklahoma City was the permitting office. They were able to, residents were able to walk in and walk out with a demolition permit without having to come downtown. So they were able to get their lives going much quicker. One thing else that we housed at our incubator there on site was the Small Business Administration set up one of their disaster outreach centers. So people who had businesses impacted as well, which were many of the people that had homes and businesses both impacted, were able to come in and apply for and walk out with approved loans from the SBA as well to get their lives back on track again. So we certainly appreciate the effort and the cooperation with Oklahoma City as well.
Appreciate it. And one more round of appreciation. Forgot part of my notes. Also forgot I had a microphone in my hand. All right. Our next bit of business is to commemorate the 25th anniversary of the Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition and the contributions that they've made. Why don't you all come up forward? Julia Kurt is leading this effort. You'll move closer to me, and we have a proclamation, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition is a statewide nonprofit organization based in Oklahoma City that supports Oklahoma's visual arts and artists and their power to enrich communities. Whereas OVAC believes that art is essential and that Oklahoma artists are worthy of support and can have vital and fulfilling careers. Whereas OVAC was established in 1988 and serves approximately 1,500 Oklahoma City artists every year through training, funding, and exposure. Whereas OVAC has 395 Oklahoma City members. And whereas OVAC has served a vital role in promoting Oklahoma art and connects audiences of more than 12,000 each year to art and artists. Whereas OVAC annually helps more than 400 Oklahoma City youth through publications and public events. And whereas during its history, OVAC has awarded more than $125,000 directly to Oklahoma City artists and provided more than 85 workshops on business of art topics. And whereas this year marks the 25th anniversary of the Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition and the contributions made to Oklahoma City through publications, educational programs, and exhibitions, helping artists throughout Oklahoma realize their potential. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2013, as Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition Day in Oklahoma City.
And let's show our appreciation for the visual art. Thank you very much.
Just want to briefly say that we're really thrilled as a statewide organization to get to support so many Oklahoma City-based artists and that we work with over 1,500 visual artists in Oklahoma City alone each year. And we know that there are many more talented artists working in our neighborhoods and our schools around the community. So we're very appreciative for the recognition. I also want to thank you for the public-private partnership that has developed with the wonderful addition of the Arts and Cultural Liaison and Robbie Kinsel's office. Public art means a ton to visual artists, whether they are the ones making it or if they're just getting to experience it. So we thank you for that support. And on a statewide level, we just couldn't do it without the Oklahoma Arts Council. So we want to thank you for all the different ways you've supported and to all those who came today to show how important artists are to our community.
Absolutely. We're very appreciative, and this is just a small example of how much we're appreciative. Thank you very much, Julia. Congratulations. We're also coming up on a significant event in our nation's history. It was 50 years ago this Friday that President John F. Kennedy was killed by an assassin in our neighboring city of Dallas. We, along with a lot of other cities across the country, are remembering our slain president with a proclamation today. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas John Fitzgerald Kennedy was the 35th President of the United States. And whereas John F. Kennedy honorably served his country during World War II in the United States Navy in the Pacific Theater, commanded a patrol torpedo boat, saw significant combat, and earned a Purple Heart in the Navy and Marine Corps Medal for his heroism. Whereas John F. Kennedy was elected to the United States House of Representatives representing Massachusetts in 1946, served in the Congress for three terms before being elected to the United States Senate in 1952, and served for eight years becoming a leading voice on international affairs. Whereas John F. Kennedy was elected President of the United States in 1960, becoming the youngest president at the age of 43, and in 1961, delivered a stirring inaugural address that announced that a new generation of Americans had taken the torch of leadership and was willing to pay any price and bear any burden to ensure the survival and the success of liberty. Whereas President John F. Kennedy's administration was defined by the New Frontier, which appealed to the best in American idealism in creating the Peace Corps, launching the United States Base Program, and calling for Americans to consider what they could do for their country. Whereas President John F. Kennedy was an exponent of racial justice, calling on all Americans to denounce racism as morally wrong, and proposed legislation that eventually became the 1964 Civil Rights Act that changed the United States. Whereas President John F. Kennedy inspired young and old alike to see anew the promise of American life, promoting a message of empowerment by telling Americans to ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. Whereas during his tenure, President John F. Kennedy guided the United States with a steady hand. President John F. Kennedy's life ended too soon, on November 22nd, 1963, at the prime of his life. Whereas the city, the United States, and the world have mourned President Kennedy's death for 50 years. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, proclaims Friday, November 22nd, 2013, to be a day of solemn remembrance and reflection on the life of President John Fitzgerald Kennedy, and that all residents of the city observe a moment of silence at 12:30 PM.
Obviously, a lot of historical significance in President Kennedy's life. I'll open it up for council comments if anyone has any thoughts or ideas about President Kennedy and what he left for America. Yes, Pat?
Just a few comments, Your Honor. I think, although I am a Republican, I'll make that point clear in fact, so this is a little bit of a skewed maybe evaluation of President Kennedy's efforts, but he stood for involvement in the political system, which I think is critical. It's always been critical, but in this day and age of this fracture between the two parties, it seems so hard to get them together. I think it's even more important that everybody participates in the political process. And I think John F. Kennedy was an example of that, particularly in his inaugural speech when he made those famous words, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." And I think that message there is more pertinent today than it's ever been.
Yeah, Meg?
I guess I would just tell a story. You know, I don't think any of us can forget where we were on that day. And I was leaving the third grade and getting on the school bus and saw that the flags were at half mast and suddenly began to hear worried about what had happened. And I arrived home, my parents were out of the country, and it was more than 24 hours before they actually heard the news. And so I think about, in these 50 years, the way the world has changed, it would have been 15 seconds today via Twitter compared to an extended period of time. It was really an interesting experience and kind of a reflection, as I've been listening to all the weekend stories about 50 years ago, just to reflect on how the world's changed.
Or on item three of the council agenda, and item 3A is to get a presentation from Roy Williams. He's the president of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and comes by quarterly to give the council an update. Good morning, Roy.
Mayor, members, council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for again inviting me back to give you an update on economic development activities and specifically very recent economic development activities. I'm very pleased to report that our region really continues to show a great amount of strength, not only in job creation, but also in new capital investment. Just this first 10 and a half months of this year, and I specifically say that because we still have a month and a half to go and I still think there's some good things that are going to happen, we've worked with companies who've indicated they're going to hire in excess of 6,300 new primary jobs that they will create and fill within the next couple of years. That's a significant number, and in fact, it hasn't been since 2008 that we've had a number like that. So this is really one of the best years in our history. It's also important that within those numbers that I highlight, one specific announcement, and that was Terex. This is a company that I think everyone remembers and hears about because they have a very long history in our community. But as many businesses, their business is changing, and they sold their road building business, but they recently made the announcement of the new Geni Lift operation that's going to be located in Oklahoma City. And so they're bringing new work to the facility and they're going to be hiring 1,500 new manufacturing employees. And so it will be even larger than it was before the particular announcement. I'm also pleased to report that our pipeline is strong. We're currently working on 29 different economic development, primary job projects. If you added all those up, they represent a potential of 14,000 new primary jobs. That number has too grown in the last several months. What we have seen and what you have read and heard is that companies have kind of sat on the sideline with their capital and their growth decisions for some time. We now see some of that breaking loose and we're beginning to see companies now pull the trigger and make decisions on investment and employment. And that bodes well for us because our reputation with site-location consultants and also with corporate real estate executives continues to improve. To keep that pipeline as it is, we continue to travel, we continue to be on the road actively. In fact, our staff recently came back from Dallas, Atlanta, California, Salt Lake City, as well as attending two major international corporate real estate conferences where we had the opportunity to visit with literally dozens and dozens of our economic development allies. Also, at one of the conferences we were at, I want to mention an award that was received by the International Economic Development Council, which honored Project 180 with a Bronze Excellence Award for the outstanding public-private partnership between the city of Oklahoma City and Devon Energy. That was quite a coup for us. With regard to retail activity, we're seeing retail recruitment activity in a real large upswing right now. Since the International Council of Shopping Centers recon event last May in Las Vegas, we've seen a real uptick in site visits from major retailers that are not currently in our market. We're working right now with 28 new-to-market retailers and we're averaging five site visits a month. In addition to working with these new-to-market retailers though, we're also working actively on grocery stores, particularly in underserved neighborhoods and commercial corridors. And some new research we've been able to conduct has been extremely valuable in us being able to support the case for these new stores. And I want to thank specifically Councilman Pettis for his interest and enthusiasm on this topic. We've worked very closely with him. As you know too, redevelopment efforts are well underway in many parts of the city, including commercial districts and right now, Uptown at 23rd is attracting a really good mix of not only national but local and regional retailers as well. And we're also seeing a great deal of interest from sports and recreation retailers. Many of these retailers are now pushing into what we call secondary markets, and they're targeting millennials and university students. We have a lot of both. So we're an also attractive place due to the large number of people that are migrating to Oklahoma City, roughly 2,000 a month now. In addition to retailers who are looking at the market and our decrease in vacancies and our increase in rental costs, we're attracting interest nationally from the development community. But not just nationally, we're also seeing it locally as well. So we anticipate a lot more good news on the retail front in the coming months. With regard to relocation, with the job growth that's already present in Oklahoma City and combined with these new-to-market companies, it's critical to keep the pipeline of talent in place as well. It's critical to their success. So our team is now spending a lot of time working one-on-one with a lot of companies who are already in our market to provide customized resources to help them not only recruit but retain the talent that they need. And we're also continuing our OKC Connect program, I think some of you are familiar with that, which is a sort of a mini leadership program, an orientation program, to help new-to-market executives really get immersed in our community as quickly as possible. Fourth thing I wanted to mention in the process, thank Mayor Cornet, Councilman McAtee for their attendance at our recent Board and Board of Advisors Retreat last week, which was held in Ardmore. We were able to take Amtrak, the Heartland Flyer, down there. And as it showed us one time before when we did this, the majority of the people on the trip had never been on that kind of transit. So it was fun to see their experience in that process. Topics that we addressed in our retreat included education in our area and our region, a briefing from the Federal Reserve on the economy, and employment trends, transit trends in other cities, and a review of the work that's going on here and the potential for private development as it relates both to the transit investment in MAPS and all of the MAPS projects. As well, we were proud of this, every year it seems like our retreats draw on more and more interest, and we had nearly 150 people at this particular one. The most striking thing I think that I came away with from our retreat was from Chad Wilkinson with the Federal Reserve System. His data indicates that job growth in Oklahoma City, unlike the nation as a whole, is occurring at all education levels. Proof that the strategies that our community has are working to increase prosperity for all, not just high income or low income. And to further focus on that point, I want to do a little roundup on some recent accolades that Oklahoma City has received, which is really nothing new. We get the best of the best rankings frequently, but there's some new accolades that give you a little bit more depth into what some of this broader story is about how Oklahoma City compares to our peers across the nation. If you read the national news, you tend to know that in many cities across the nation, middle-paying jobs in middle-class families seem to be disappearing. We seem to see a greater divide in income levels. But fortunately, that's not the case in Oklahoma City. If you go to newgeography.com, they ranked Oklahoma City fifth in the nation, fifth highest in the nation, for its growth of middle-income employment, crediting our low cost of living and our thriving energy sector as a cause of our citizens' upward mobility. As well, The Atlantic and The Wall Street Journal recently ranked Oklahoma City as the number 12th best place in America for millennials to go to. The article stated that young adults are moving to cities with knowledge-based or high-tech economies, cities that are among the nation's top performers in the economy and in job growth. And those of us who live here know that the environment that we've created here, the business-friendly city, allows entrepreneurs to thrive as well, and our energy and bioscience sector certainly support that. And I'd be happy to share with you the blogs and the websites where you can read a whole lot more on that. But some of the takeaways for what this really means to us is, first of all, even post-recession, our low cost of living and the quality of life here provide opportunities. It encourages growth and stability in ways that other cities just aren't seeing. They're envious of us. And secondly, Oklahoma City citizens, those that move here, have a fair chance to succeed and to experience upward mobility, which they're not seeing in a lot of other cities. And that's why companies want to locate here. Final thing, intercity visits continue to happen here on a regular basis. We just completed having and hosting a rather large group from Little Rock, Arkansas, another group from Tucson, Arizona, and then also, we spent about a day and a half with the, not immediate past, but a past mayor of San Diego, who is now the president and CEO of the San Diego Chamber, to really understand what's going on in Oklahoma City as well. I would conclude by reminding everyone that we're getting ready to celebrate the 20-year anniversary of MAPS. The chamber is playing a key role in the execution of some of these activities. As you know, because it's on your agenda on Tuesday, the 3rd of December, there will be a proclamation here at City Hall. That next day, on Wednesday, is a MAPS anniversary luncheon. I would encourage all of you to come to that. It's free, all you have to do is register. It is at the Oklahoma History Center, and you'll be able to see the new MAPS exhibits that will be on the second floor. And then the concluding event will be on Friday, December 6th, at the Chesapeake Arena. So just wanted to bring those to your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Roy, thank you. Yeah, Pat?
Your Honor, I have a couple of questions. Roy, I'm the mix of middle class and upper class, lower class kind of things. When you go out to recruit a business or industry, you look at their salary levels. It's nice to have Boeings and Continental Motorsports in here, but we need to offer a level of salaries commensurate with the education of our people that is below what would be required to work for a Continental or a Boeing. We need to offer a whole spectrum of job opportunities. And are you, do you all consider that when you recruit?
Absolutely. And if you look at these 6,300 jobs I just talked about, you'll see that whole spectrum. I mean, you'll see sort of some entry-level jobs, you'll see mid-level jobs, you'll see some upper-income jobs. So you have to create that ladder. People can progress up, not just always going far, you know.
I think it's exactly right, and I appreciate that.
And as well, I would mention too, that if you look at how the state and how the city have structured incentives, it reinforces that. They're set up to be supportive of doing that.
The second question is, you mentioned the fact that Oklahoma City was known as a high-tech city, and we were attracting millennials that way, and I think that's great. But how long do you think we can maintain that kind of a reputation with the education system we have in Oklahoma City performing at the F level?
It would take me all day to answer that question. That's a tough one, and that's why we talked about education at our retreat. That's That's a real challenge. I think that's the bad news. The good news is, this is happening across this country. You can't find a peer city that has found the silver bullet and has figured out how to deal with their educational issues. Everybody's trying to grapple with it and come up with ideas. That's why we brought in the gentleman from Harvard University to share with us best practices nationally to find out what can we do. And I think we just have to make the commitment, we'll do everything we can do. But we don't yet know really what that is.
Do you think the Chamber would be in position to support some educational initiatives?
Oh, absolutely. We've already made the commitment to the school district. We just made a commitment to fund a community survey for the school district. We've been very supportive in the legislature at both from pre-K through K through 12 through higher ed career tech.
I appreciate that, because I think the educational system here is going to be, could be, a powerful tool for economic development if it was a top performer.
Talent is the key to success, and that's where your talent comes from.
Okay, thanks, Roy.
You know, Roy, to follow on Pat's comments, we did get some amazing coverage in The New York Times two or three Sundays ago, I think, with a great article about our early childhood education, really lauding and beginning to see some of those results. So I think, you know, that is certainly one shining star. And if we look at our spectrum from KIP to the School of Science and Math, we've got some amazing models of how to make this work. It's really how we, I think, how we right-size it and take those models and spread it across the district. What I really wanted to talk about is no surprise, and that's retail. But as a city that's so dependent on sales tax, I think it's really exciting to hear you've got 28 new-to-market folks looking at us. Are they looking across the entire footprint of the city in terms of locating? Or they're...
Yes, they're not geographic-specific. They're looking at the entire market. And two, what you see as to how this evolves is most of these retailers kind of come in very soft. They want to make sure that their first initial entry into the market is successful. And when that happens, boom. You know, you think they're coming in with one store, they come in with three, four, five stores. But they want to establish that one first. So it's, so what they tend to do is to overanalyze the first time around and make sure they're, they leave no stone unturned to get it right. So they're very, very slow to do that. But once they're into the market and successful, then all of a sudden, they saturate the market.
Thank you.
Yeah, John?
I just want to publicly thank the Chamber as we work together for the underserved markets. I just want to publicly thank the Chamber for its work in trying to get some things done in the underserved markets in our city.
It makes it a lot easier when we have help like you.
Thank you.
Yeah, David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Roy, I appreciate the emphasis on improving the education system, in particular, the Oklahoma City Public Schools academic achievement. And I would encourage the Chamber and its members, when opportunities do present themselves, and I think there will be over the next year, to help fund, whether it's consultants like the one you met with in Ardmore, but other outsiders who can help us minimize that achievement gap, that gap between the performance in Oklahoma City Public Schools and those in the suburban schools. And I would also encourage the Chamber to make an emphasis to focus, especially in the high school, programs that provide for immediate access into the job market, such as the manufacturing intern program that they have at Southeast High School. You know, today's job, even a labor-intensive job, still requires or demands a high level of academic achievement. And I think if we all, the city, the Chamber, the school districts can work together, we can achieve some of those improvements and make this just a stronger base of education. I would also like to suggest that despite all the good news, you know, we never want to forget about one of the main industries in Oklahoma and Oklahoma City, and that's the oil and gas industry. Hopefully, this is just hopeful anticipation, GE will announce that we'll have that oil and gas research facility here in Oklahoma City. I think if we can, we can begin efforts to make Oklahoma City a second-tier oil and gas capital, similar to, say, Denver, Colorado. We've got a strong base of oil and gas clients now. We've got two strong universities that can really assist with this effort, University of Oklahoma and Oklahoma State University. And if we could get something like the GE Research Facility, I know Councilman Ryan and I have spoken about this, this could really be a springboard into making Oklahoma City a second-tier. We won't ever catch Houston in that regard, but no other city will either. But we could certainly be a second-tier city in the oil and gas industry. And they provide great jobs, and we need those jobs to provide the revenue so we can go out to the retail centers and do some shopping, which helps funds us. So thanks again for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, General Electric has announced that they're coming to Oklahoma. They have not made an announcement on their location within Oklahoma.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand, and hopefully that'll be soon. My understanding, it's between Oklahoma City and Norman at this point. Either place would be fine, but I prefer Oklahoma City. And it would be...
You're being generous there.
Yeah, and it would be great to have that research facility, and then we could expand upon that, so.
That's right. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, Roy, just going back to your 1,500 jobs at Tarex and Councilman Ryan's comments, those 1,500 jobs are not the kind of jobs that we've had in the past from the Boeings moving in. These are jobs that the middle class, if you want to use that term, will really benefit from, and it'll be a tremendous effort. And of course, manufacturing is an area that creates wealth along with energy and is a key segment to our economic future. And so that's great news to have that operation kicking back up live here, taking over from, I don't know if any of you know the history, but that operation was founded years ago by Bill Swisher's family. CMI was one of the leading world companies in manufacturing of road-building equipment, went through some challenging times, and this really brings it back to a level equal to the old days.
And I don't know that I ever expected this to happen either. I mean, you know, once you lose those manufacturing jobs, you know, you got to wonder in kind of today's international economy, are you going to get those back? And we are. So that's, yeah, we should really salute them and thank them for bringing those jobs back to Oklahoma City. Yeah, Ed?
Roy, can I just, on another topic, in a month, we're going to have a couple of presentations on convention center hotels and economic impact analysis from OCU and the consultant that's been working from Dallas. And I'm just wondering if you can help me process some things as I'm reading the literature and trying to understand convention center economics. What seems to be a growing concern in the industry, I'm reading Greg Ortoli, who's the chairman of the Center for Exhibition Industry Research, and he talks in a study last year about the outlook for the country, that the model maybe is not sustainable, that we have a buyer's market in which unrealistic concessions are being made to book business. And the concern being expressed is that these unrealistic subsidies and incentives are altering the free market, and that this practice can't continue over time and still provide the quality facilities all buyers require today, and that maybe the current excess supply that would be equilibrated by people pulling out of, competing for national conventions, that maybe some cities would concentrate more on just focusing on state and local and not competing at the national level. Can you talk maybe to what he's expressing, the concern he's expressing about unrealistic subsidies, unrealistic being dumped into the market?
I haven't read the study, so I don't know that I can adequately address it. But we don't view ourselves as a tier-one national convention center location, and we don't aspire to be. So we don't think of ourselves as regional, and we see tremendous regional opportunities when we look at competition out there. We believe we can position ourselves as well as anyone. And it was just announced, I think, this week, that the metro, or either it was Oklahoma City, I forget which, but the tourism department announced that we're now a $2 billion visitor industry in this marketplace, and that, and a lot of that infrastructure supports the convention business, because when the people come here, they want retail access, restaurant access, et cetera. So based on what we're seeing and what we're hearing from meeting planners regionally and nationally, they're still aggressively looking for great places. The other thing I would say is incentives don't offset your success. It's kind of like a business operation. If you can't succeed, an incentive isn't going to keep you in business. And a good incentive for a meeting or a conference isn't going to make that meeting or conference successful. You have to be a good place, you have to have a good product, you have to have good infrastructure, you have to have good facilities, you have to have a good, a good community. And we stack up extremely well in that. And so, you know, we believe that based on everything we can see, there's a great market out there that's not yet tapped by Oklahoma City.
But as I'm making my way through, I mean, there's probably 20 convention sports and leisure studies that have been done in other cities since we did ours that are available for review. I'm wondering, have you given additional thought to, since ours is now approaching five years old, a lot of it's maybe outdated, have you given additional thought to releasing that to the public, letting us process that with our constituents?
I haven't talked to our leadership about it, but I would think if we believe the information is no longer to the advantage of our competitors, we would consider that. But we don't want to give our competitors our intelligence. That doesn't make sense.
Most, I mean, I, again, there's probably 20 cities that have put their studies online since we did ours.
That's their choice. They don't seem to have the same kind of study we have. Our study looks at what are our assets and liabilities relative to our competitors. Theirs may just be a study, should we build a building? That's a different study.
That might be something you would consider and discuss with...
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Roy? As always, we appreciate your work on the economic development side with the lowest unemployment in the United States. It's a good time to be a Chamber member.
It is, thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate your work. We're on item 3B now of the council agenda. This is an appointment of the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 5th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both October 22nd and the 29th. Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning, starting on page 15 under item 8F1. Page 15 again, 8F1. Item E, 2217, Northwest 10th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner's removed. Item I, 4529, Southwest 36th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item J, 1516, Northeast 48th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Moving to page 16, under page, under item 8, G1A, 7901, South Council, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C, 1315, Northwest 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E, 908, Southeast 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 2325, Northwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 1516, Northeast 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And finally, item K, 1408, Southwest 66th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA?
Your Honor, I have a couple of comments. MFA A is renewable contract under sole-source providers, and I've commented on this before. I think we need to look at that very carefully. Our annual maintenance in this particular contract is going to be over $300,000. And I think for that amount, we might be able to have a couple of programmers and some supervision who could put together our programs ourselves. And they would be tailored for our specific needs, not just a one-size-fits-all kind of thing. Anyway, I just thought that question. And then on item B, I was curious as to if we were going to take into consideration the developments along Portland or Highway 74, because this is sort of straddles that made a meridian kind of...
I'm sure we are, but I'll make sure that those comments get back to the Engineering Department.
On MFA D is a project on fitness, which I think is a great project. How soon will this be available to the employees? Do we have any feel for what it's going to cost?
Well, it says effective here January 1st. And we already have other, you know...
Other programs? And how will this fit in with those other programs?
There are other organizations that, you know, that are in the fitness business that we already have, and we're just adding goals for our 4,000 employees, basically.
That's correct.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, ready to vote on the MFA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Just two items today.
Second.
All right, comments or questions here? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are four items.
Mayor, on item B, both 1 and 2, we ask that that be deferred until December 3rd. There are some issues that need to be wrapped up on that item. So defer item B 1 and 2 until December 3rd.
Okay, do we need a motion on that, Francis? Okay.
Your Honor, a quick question, if I may ask, on AOCAT A1, and that is, we're buying a truck, and we're asking specifically for a CNG-powered vehicle. And I think that's great. I think the quicker we can move the city's fleet towards that, the better off our citizens will be. Do we have any idea of what percentage of our fleet, existing fleet, is CNG-powered?
You know, for the, our entire fleet?
Yes.
No, I don't. I mean, it's because we have so many police vehicles and fire vehicles and such that don't fall into that category. But the general, first of all, the solid waste fleet is on a goal to go 100% to CNG. And we do have a lot of vehicles, both in Wilder and our general fleet, that are CNG. But I can get you a report on that. That wouldn't...
CNG buses, for instance, are...
CNG buses at the airport, and we've got a couple of Model 1s going to run with the transit services.
Well, I think we ought to ease into it, buy a couple and see how their maintenance and operating costs compare.
That's exactly what we're doing.
I think, but I do think the overall objective is good.
Now, for the solid waste vehicles, it's really been a great success because of the fact that they're quieter in the residential areas, they put off less odors in the residential areas, obviously leaving a smaller carbon footprint. And because of the amount of fuel they use, the fuel savings has been significant. So they've been a real, real success within the solid waste area.
Well, just looking at, you know, public transportation systems all over the world, it seems like more and more are moving to either CNG or electric power or some combination thereof. I think we are well positioned to do that here, and I think we can continue it. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, ready to vote the EAT? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I hear a second. How about individual considerations?
Your Honor, I'd like to ask for item 6W to be voted on separately.
Okay.
And I have a couple of other questions, if I might inject them. 6A.2 and 6E.
Okay, Meg?
And Mayor, if I could, 6AC and AN1.
All right. All right, Pat, you want to discuss AZ?
AE.
AE.
AE.2 is my first comment, question. On this particular one, it's, we're going to hire a centralized data system. Are we going to get a sole-source performance system here as well? It's A.2, 6A.2.
A.2, excuse me.
A is alpha.
Got it. Bill, can you help us on that? Chief Cities here.
Yeah, the system that we're, we currently have a system that has to be replaced, and basically the functionality of it and everything is really, is a sole source on it.
Okay. Now, the sole-source determination bill, I think, is important for us to really look at hard, because we get one-size-fits-all so often in that.
Right.
And we, it either does or does not do everything we want it to do. And whereas if we modify, I mean, if we took our own programmers and put together a system, it may not be as quick or as efficient, but it certainly would be more what we needed in Oklahoma City rather than...
Right. And IT's, I mean, our IT group is always involved with that to make sure that our, because it's used in our criminal intelligence unit. it's used in our criminal intelligence unit. That centralized system is primarily for criminal intelligence, undercover operations, monitoring, those types of things. It has to coordinate with other functionalities and other systems within our, within our systems.
Because a lot of those sole source provide products don't allow any kind of modification whatsoever.
That's correct. They don't, in many cases.
You get what you buy, and sometimes it's exactly what you need, sometimes it falls short.
Right.
That's why I think we need to look at sole source provider contracts very carefully before we enter into them. Your Honor, on item 6E, it's easy. We are hiring a collection agency. And I think that's a good thing, because I know any large retail operation, as the city is with its water and sewer...
We've always had a collection agency on contract.
But the estimated cost is $300,000, estimated collection is $3 million. Do we have experience that would justify that kind of extraordinary return?
Well, that type of return, it's a percent of collections.
Well, I mean, but we're investing $300,000 on it, and we're estimating that we're going to collect $3 million. Do we have any experience that shows we'll have that kind of success?
Yes, we turn these over, and the actual fee is paid by each defendant that has a case for collection. So they pay their own fee. It's not an actual cost to the city anymore. We had a new state law three years ago that allowed us to add the fee to the defendant. And we still, we can add up to 35%, but our collection contract with this company, they do the work for 10%.
So, but you feel comfortable that their estimate of $300,000 worth of fees will generate $3 million in...
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket, Meg?
I did, Mayor. I just wanted to mention two things, and Chief City is still here. But the two items that I pulled out, both are good news for public safety. And one is the award of the contract for the new police headquarters building. Chief, is there anything you want to comment, anything you want to say about that? It's almost a $20 million project and very exciting.
No, it is very exciting. And the only thing I'll say is there's just so many people who are involved. Council, ADG, Public Works, everybody worked and came together on this project, and we're real excited about it. We think everybody would be very pleased with the project for the next, future for the police department, city for the next 30 or 40 years. I think it'd be pretty good.
Well, I know we're all looking forward to the ribbon cutting.
And it came in a couple of million dollars under budget, too.
Yeah.
Or revised budget. Clearly, we had a budget to shore it down, but the revised budget came in.
Who will be responsible for the maintenance of the building?
The maintenance of the building will be worked out with General Services and the Police Department.
Because I think deferred maintenance, which is, the old police station was a victim of that, is a false god. It's some immediate savings, but you generally pay for them in the long haul, more than pay for them in the long haul.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mayor, then, item 6AN1 is an allocation out of our 2007 bond issue to upgrade and remodel the kitchen at Fire Station Number 8. And, you know, it's an important thing in the firehouse, to have a good kitchen. So I just wanted to mention that that was happening as well.
Any other comments on the consent docket?
Mayor, we do have a present, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Your Honor, I have a 6W to vote separately. Is that still on your chair?
Oh, yeah. Thanks for reminding me, Pat. Okay.
Sounds annoying. Well, Wendell's going to be here for presentations this morning on Memorial Park. Wendell stopped me before the meeting this morning and said, you know, I'm doing the Memorial Park presentation this morning? And I said, yes, I did. And he goes, this is just fun for me. This is what I like to do as part of my job. So we're here today to have, to be with Wendell, and he's having some fun.
We're in a department where we're supposed to help people have fun, so at the point where we stop having fun, we probably aren't able to do that. So we are very much enjoying what I'm going to tell you about today. We've had the good fortune, my staff and I, to be involved in a lot of beautiful park projects in the last few years as a result of the citizens of Oklahoma City giving us bond money to improve their park system and increase the size of their park system. Building new parks from the ground up is a wonderful thing to be involved in. But I can tell you that re-establishing a historic park and bringing it back to its prime certainly equals the thrill of building a new park. And we're about to do that at Memorial Park. Memorial Park is one of our most historic parks at Northwest 36th Street between Classen and Western. It's just short of 20 acres. Currently has a walking path, a traditional fountain that's very popular and much loved by citizens, tennis courts, a basketball court, a playground, spray ground, the Shakespeare Garden, parking lots, a small shelter, picnic shelter, and of course, the Boys and Girls Club, a partnership that's been very, very valuable for us. Funding is in the '07 bond issue to renovate this park and bring it back to its prime. And the plans and specifications are on today for your approval, and we're ready to go out to bid. Some of the improvements that we'll be making at the Memorial Park is, include the re-landscaping and rehabilitation of the historic fountain. The fountain will remain in its current configuration, but it needs work. It needs mechanical work, and much of the landscaping around it is beyond its maturity and needs to be replaced. We'll be refurbishing the tennis courts. They badly need that work. They're heavily used and very popular as an inner-city recreation and athletic area, but they need work, and we'll be refurbishing those. We'll be creating a new entryway on the north side of the park off of 36th. That's very important, because the traditional entryway was off of Western, going to the west. And with the Boys and Girls Club there now, it's convenient for the Boys and Girls Club as an entry. It is not as convenient for the general public as an entry. So we'll be establishing a new parking lot and beautiful historic appearing entryway off of Northwest 36th. We'll be renovating the playground and adding to it. We will be rehabbing the Shakespeare Garden, which has begun to fray at the edges. It will remain in its current configuration, but we'll give it maintenance, and we'll do new landscaping around that area. The fountain, as already mentioned, is very important. You can see it as you drive by on Classen at 36th. It needs a lot of work. The landscaping around it needs work. We want to bring it back to its prime. We will not change the general configuration of it. It's much-loved, and we like it as well. There was once a soccer field at this area. Pardon me, I'm getting ahead here. As I mentioned earlier, the new entryway off of 36th is an important gateway to the park, and will be even more so as we're able to accommodate more parking off of 36th. We now own the land that was donated to us by the Boys and Girls Club just west of the current parking lot off of 36th, and that will become parking as well. So we're going to be able to accommodate a lot more parkers. The parking there now is very disorganized. When you pull in, you wonder how you're supposed to park, where you're supposed to park. That's going to be taken care of. So as well, you can see depicted on your page, a new entry arbor that we'll be building off of 36th and that parking lot as well. Then there's the soccer field. There used to be a soccer field that was heavily used, just about where the Boys and Girls Club building is now. We promised the community when we began working this plan that we would rebuild the soccer field, and that is going to happen. It will be in the area just west of the current Boys and Girls Club. We're also building a walking path around that soccer field, which we think will be of great interest. The walking path around the exterior of the current park will remain and will be improved, but we'll add this circular walk around the soccer field. People like to have an activity near them while they're walking and jogging, and they'll be able to watch the soccer games going on while they're walking around the field itself. Shakespeare Garden, if you've not seen it as you drive by, I would urge you after we finish to go walk up to it and see it. It's very historic. This is the other icon in the park in addition to the fountain. It will remain as it configured now, but will have renovation and new landscaping. We are expecting to finish this project by the fall of next year. And at that point, we'll have a renewed historic park. The budget for this plan is 1.7 million. This is going to be very, very fun for the public. I can assure you that the public will love this new park. They'll be able to see what is still historic about it, but it must be much more usable for them. So we are excited about this project and look forward to getting started on it. It'll be a beautiful park. And we, one more thing, I never want to forget to thank the public for approving the bond issues that allow us to make these beautiful improvements.
That's right. A reminder, we went 20 years without passing those bond issues for parks, so...
We haven't forgotten that, sir.
We need to remind people that the benefits of passing those. Thank you. Yeah, Pat?
Your Honor, I have just a couple of quick questions. Wendell, I think it's a great project. Your drawings look really good. Congratulations. Was, do you have money in your budget for maintaining the park once?
Yes.
And will you install some kind of irrigation system, keep those new plants alive?
Is there irrigation?
Yes, it's an alternate.
It's in our, it's an alternate in the contract.
Does that mean, are we going to accept the alternate, install it?
We are if funding allows, and we believe that it will.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, David?
Wendell, excuse me for missing the very beginning. The area along 36th Street that will now become parking, did houses used to be there? Did we acquire that and tear down the houses? How was that land acquired?
That land was acquired a number of years ago by the Boys and Girls Club, and they removed a dwelling. And they've donated that land to us a number of years ago so that we could build parking in the future there.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Wendell, I'm really pleased that we're going to do this. The idea that we're going to renovate these older parks is really a great deal, I think. As I recall, it was named Memorial Park as a memorial to the people that served in World War I. Is that right?
It was originally named Putnam Park in the early 1900s, and it was renamed Memorial in, I wrote it down because Mr. White didn't think I'd remember, and I don't, 1928, it was renamed Memorial Park.
Okay, and that was when it became a memorial to the veterans of World War I?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody know what happened to the little doughboy that was on the top of the fountain when it was built originally? Or did it go by the way of all that stuff that was over in Centennial Park?
I've not seen that. It was what, sir, on top of the fountain?
There was a little doughboy, a little World War I soldier that was part of that display, which made, tied the word memorial to what it was memorializing.
Honestly, it hasn't been there since I've been associated with the department, so I don't know the answer.
I just wondered if it was in a box someplace, like all the stuff that...
I can certainly check.
Okay. The other thing is about the basketball court. I think that's a great idea to renovate that basketball court. Has thought been given to night basketball there?
Yes, and if we can light, do lighting, we will do so. It'll be something that would have to be a change order, but we hope that we can do some lighting.
In the summertime, it seems to me that night basketball might be, you could get the Police Athletic League or somebody like that involved in it, and night basketball might be an alternative to some of the activities that go on in the summertime, especially in inner-city neighborhoods.
And we're also renovating the tennis courts.
Right, I knew that. Let me ask a question that Pat touched on about maintenance. When you say there's money in maintenance, I mean, maintenance is money that goes on, on and on and on. I mean, that's the reason...
It's in our operating budget. That is, the money to maintain all the parks are in our operating budget, and it will remain in our operating budget that allows us to maintain...
It's not endowed separately or...
It is not endowed separately, no. But we don't see this new design as implemented being tremendously more labor-intensive than the design we have now. So the money that we have now for maintaining...
I hate to be throwing water on this parade that you're, because I know you're very pleased with the park. But if it's not any more intensive in terms of maintenance than it was last time, that doesn't help anything. That's why it's in the shape it's in right now, because whatever maintenance it had wasn't getting done.
Some of the frayed edges, as I referred to it, have to do with just age. The fountain has aged and needs maintenance from aging. Some of the, there's been significant damage. Oh, go ahead, sir.
I don't want you to take this personally, but we've got to find a way to fund park maintenance.
Yes, sir.
It's like all the projects that we've done, especially those that we've done in the last 20 years, there's this tsunami of maintenance costs that's coming on us. And we have got to find a way to do that. We can't, we can't just rely on it won't cost any more than it's been costing, because we haven't been able to meet the cost that it's been. I'm not criticizing you.
No, I understand.
I mean, you get your budget, and you do the best, you do a great job with it, as far as I can see. But we have just got to find a way to keep this park from falling, gradually falling into this state of disrepair, not caused by age, but caused by lack of maintenance. And you can't go to any parks in Oklahoma City that you can't see that dichotomy. There is a portion of them that are frayed around the edges because they're 50 years old or 60 years old. There's also a portion of them that just aren't being maintained the way we ought to, because we don't, we don't put the funds into maintenance for it.
Well, you're right, sir. It is my job to do the best I can with the money that has been allotted to me. Would I prefer to have additional money allotted to me? Yes, sir. But it's my job to do the best I can with the funding I have now.
The Parks Master Plan, has that been, that's been released yet, or we...
It has, it has not been accepted yet, but it will be soon.
But it basically quantifies what Pete's saying, that we're underfunding maintenance of parks and that we should, for the foreseeable future, increase it about 5% a year for many years.
It does say that we are short of maintenance money, yes, sir.
Okay.
Substantially. Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments on the consent docket?
I do have a question on AD, which is, this is where the fund balance money from a couple of years ago went into this streetscape on Western. We're working on some things from 41st to 46th, but this preceded that. This is north of 50th, and the fund balance is being used to make some changes, including a fifth lane from Lombardi to 56th, and then adding a couple of traffic signals for safety at Lombardi and Western, and 55th and Western. And this is supposed to start in December 13th. Do we have a sense of when the traffic lights would go in?
I can't, I can't answer. I've not seen the construction schedule. Paul Bronson's here for Public Works. Paul, do you know the, do you have more detail on the construction schedule?
Councilman, I'm not totally up to speed on the timing of the traffic lights. I do know that, you know, in just a matter of minutes, I could get you that information from the staff, though. So I'll make a call.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the consent docket. I'm going to amend that on the fly to not include item W, which Pat would like us to vote on separately.
Same.
Uh-huh. Ready to vote on the council, on the consent docket agenda, minus item W? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Someone like to make a motion on item W?
Yes.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. This is on item W.
I'd like to make a complaint.
Okay.
For two things in this particular project. One is, why does a school need a bigger sign that is authorized by our current ordinance? To me, that's a competitive advantage some commercial institutions may need, but I can't see that in a school. And secondly, why is the city carrying their water to the Board of Adjustment? They can afford to build an eight-foot sign. It seems like they could afford to hire a lawyer to take that through. I understand there's no, they waive the filing costs for nonprofits, so it doesn't cost the city anything to do this. But I think the president is sort of unfortunate. I don't think we ought to get involved in these sort of things. First of all, I don't think we ought to get involved in making, approving a variance for a school sign. To me, that's unnecessary. And the second thing is the fact the city's carrying their water to, carrying it to the Board of Adjustment. I don't like that because, and the reason is, it's a nonprofit. Well, it's a nonprofit school, but nonprofit is a very broad term that describes a vast number of organizations, and I don't think we ought to get involved in this particular thing. So I would be ready to vote on it.
Okay. But I think, I think this is, I mean, we aren't approving it, we're just initiating an application to the Board of Adjustment. And I've been under the pressure that this isn't really, this isn't setting a precedent. We've done this before. And in the, there's a stipulation in our code that says that a government entity, you know, we can waive the fee for it, and this is one way of doing it. And so that's why, that's why we chose to do it this way. Okay.
All right. I'm not sure I understand that waiving the fee, this is one way of doing it. If they hired a lawyer and took it to the Board of Adjustment, the fee could still be waived, and they'd have legal expenses, obviously, but they would not have to pay a fee for that process. That's my understanding of nonprofit.
So, okay, well, maybe that's right. I thought that somebody had to initiate it. Either, either us or the Planning Commission, I thought. Is that, is that right, or is that wrong?
That's correct. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows the Planning Commissioner of the City Council to initiate applications. And once you take that action, that basically means that the fee is waived, and then we work with the applicant to process their case. And it has been done before, but each council's different.
I think it's a bad idea to do it. If my colleagues feel differently, I'm sure they'll vote against it. But I do think it's a bad idea. I think, I have a serious question as to why does a school need a bigger sign than, you know, provided for in our existing ordinance? Is there some, you know, geographical abnormal situation out there that we need to take into consideration?
Well, that'd really be the question that the Board of Adjustment will ask when that case gets there, if it's an appropriate variance, if it meets the standards. All this does is get that application there to the board.
Okay. We're voting on item W. Cast your votes, and it passes 8-1. We're on to the concurrence docket.
Would the item subject any due consideration?
All right. There are eight items. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now we're on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is in Ward 2. It's to close a utility easement. Ed, you okay with this?
I am. I move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anyone here to speak on item 8A1? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 closes an easement in Ward 8. Pat, you all right with this?
Yes, Your Honor. The applicant is aware of the fact that there is an existing storm sewer, sanitary sewer in this particular easement, and they have made provisions to take care of it. And so I think it's a good, a good project. I would move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8A2, and it passed unanimously.
I would like to ask for the emergency on this particular project so they can go to, carry on this process to District Court to get the easement officially vacated.
Okay.
I would move the emergency.
All right. Cast your, cast your votes on the emergency. It passed unanimously.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item 8B deals with smart meters for electric substations. We have a motion on item 8B1.
Move the item.
Second.
All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B2 and 3 have to do with outdoor food sales. I'll look for a motion on item 8B2 first.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And how about a motion on 8B3?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes here, and it passes. We go on to item 8C, and this would eliminate a couple of parking meters in Ward 7. Jane Jenkins has signed up to speak. Jane?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I am here representing downtown Oklahoma City and the Bricktown Association, and we're here to ask you, we're requesting a continuance on this item. We just learned of this over the weekend, and the Bricktown Association would like some more time to visit with the applicants and see if there's any alternatives. Basically, this is 13 parking spaces, but it represents 6% of the available curb parking in Bricktown, which is pretty important to the retailers that are there. It's also directly across, excuse me, the request is on the south side of Sheridan, but there's a lot of retail and business opportunities on the north side of Sheridan that could use that parking. In particular, it's taking away parking from the existing restaurant Crab Town, which is a problem. So we, we just would like some chances to visit with the hotel developers and the owners to see what the alternatives might be, so we're not opposing or approving. We would just like some more time.
I move for a deferral of four weeks.
All right. We're voting on a deferral for item 8C. Cast your votes. That deferral passes unanimously. All right. Item 8D is a public hearing, and this has to do with the council's continuing interest in dealing with abandoned buildings throughout the city. We have a small stack of people who have asked to speak today. I'll ask each person to come up and identify their, their name and their address, and then if they would keep their comments to three minutes or less, we would appreciate it. Walter Jacks?
Cornet and Counsel, I'm Walter Jacks. My address is 4832 Kelch Drive. I'm just here with a couple of comments about this Richmond study. This came out a few months ago, a very good study regarding vacant and abandoned buildings, and I support the program fully. I just had a couple of comments from a citizen's perspective on page seven of the report, and I've just copied the cover, the cover sheet. On the flip side of that is page seven of the report. Highlighted pretty low in there is a list of bulleted items that one of the authors of the report, who's apparently a respected expert on the topic, put together. It lists as second the items that contribute to the downfall of a neighborhood, the vacant and abandoned buildings. The first bulleted item is vacant lots. And the registry, I understand that the city is proposing to put together, does not include vacant lots at this time. I still support the registry, but what I would like to see is a city not lose sight that we need to address the vacant lots every bit as much as we need to address the vacant buildings and the boarded-up buildings. So please consider that. And then finally, there's another page that has a couple of images. This is a house on northeast 8th Street in Ward 7 that I'd driven past for 18 years, and it's in that same state for 18 years. And with a simple dressing up, what I call a facade kit, it's just some cutouts made out of the same type plywood that was put on the house previously, and just painted up a little bit. It looks like a different place. It looks more inviting. Granted, we'd rather see an inhabited dwelling there, but failing that, I think it would be nice if we could somehow incorporate into this registry concept an incentive for owners to allow their houses to be provided with facade kits, you know, whether it's by volunteers or the owner does it, perhaps as a reduced rate for being on that registry, just to keep the neighborhood looking like a neighborhood and not another boarded-up house, which is perfectly legal. Thank you very much.
All right. Walter, thanks for those comments. That's good. Darla Cheek?
Good morning, Counsel. I am Darla Cheek. I'm with the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Association of Realtors. We have been working very closely, you want my address, sorry, 2621 Southeast 95th, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. We have been working closely with the Planning Department on this issue, and we are in full support of the abandoned and vacant property initiatives. We were concerned, however, when we actually saw the city ordinance that came out. The city ordinance is problematic on the 30-day timeframe. If the house is being repossessed by the bank or in a repossessed status, it will take longer to rehab probably and get that to actively marketing status. So we do have some very strong concerns about that. We also feel like some property owners are very responsible, and they maintain their properties, they're boarded up, there's no city violations, and we would like that to be considered as well. There are many situations that a house can become abandoned and vacant, and one of those might be a fire, a legal issue, medical issues. I just want us to really consider, as long as the property, there are no city violations and there are no problems at that property. It's being maintained, no code violations, that we really consider the statuses on those. I also have a concern about the commercial property being lumped in with the residential property. There's two separate animals here. Commercial does take longer to rehab in the construction. It takes longer to lease. So we would just consider that those be looked at separately and not be lumped in, and a 30-day timeframe on those will also be problematic, I would believe. The real estate industry is making a remarkable comeback, and we are just going to request that we consider not doing anything to damage that at this point. I don't want to deter investors from coming in and buying up some of these vacant and abandoned properties.
All right. Darla, thank you. John Meek?
My name is John W. Meek. Address, home address is 7207 Skylark Lane in Ward 1. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I own a first commercial management company, a management company that deals with commercial properties in Oklahoma City. Sometimes I stray over into the residential, but I find myself in, look, preparing for this, I looked at the Ward map, and I found out that my 60-plus buildings that I oversee in Oklahoma City from a management perspective are in every Ward in the, in the city, including Bethany, Midwest City, Dell City, et cetera. We're spread out all over. Been doing this for over 30 years. We deal with the small market, the, up to the mid-size market, the people that will be hurt the most by this, in my opinion. I'm speaking from a perspective of handling, on average, over the 60 buildings. Sometimes I get up to 80 buildings on average through the, over these years, retail, office, and industrial. I'm across the whole gamut of all the types of buildings. To classify a commercial and residential buildings into the same category as a vacant or abandoned building is a poorly-written ordinance. Making the determination that a building after 30 days becomes a criteria for depressing the market values of nearby properties is incorrect. Endangering the public's safety or health is also not a valid statement when it comes to most commercial properties. Requiring additional government services and other items by such a short-sighted timeline as 30 days, it's just not appropriate to use that timeline. This is just not the case for most commercial properties and their ownerships. The effort of the city to lump the majority of good buildings into a status that these are vacant or a nuisance is totally unjustified. It would appear on the surface of this ordinance that the good buildings will be charged a fee to become a poor property by definition and continue to be charged monthly until the measure is cleared up. The city has chosen through the written criteria of a vacant building to ignore market trends, location, neighborhoods, seasonal marketing, ownership economics, overall development of a property and its design, to name a few. The city is implying that an existing building should be sold or leased within 30 days or it becomes a vacant or nuisance building. Let's say that you have a retail building with a large anchoring tenant that gives the building a 45% occupancy, or yet, a 60% occupancy, then attached are two or more unoccupied spaces to that building. This is now classified as a vacant building because the two units are more outnumbered the single tenant. Let's say an owner has a cluster of three buildings with an occupancy at or above 50% ratio, criteria overall, due to the fact that each building has too many individual units in each building unoccupied, they're now considered vacant. However, in, if the units are cleared out at considerable cost and become one unit and two units remain in each building, at least the unit comparison ratio cannot be used. The same three, the same three buildings on a property is equal to an old Crossroads Mall in size, and size does not matter. Let's say an office building looks, by exterior appearances, to be in tip-top shape, no signs of being vacant or nuisance to the public or the community. However, the code inspector chooses to inquire about the inside occupancy and determines that, that is less than 50% or more, has let more suites unoccupied than occupied. This building is now considered a vacant building. Requiring a vacant building to have an active water meter and/or electric meter is often a way to throw away money or too costly to maintain during the vacant period. In 99% of cases, the, the building owner would leave the meter turned off until it needs to be used for showing or other purposes. However, the city and electric company would gain a minimum of $25 to $27 monthly, $300 annually, for a water meter sitting there turned off, and a $28 to $30 monthly fee, or $36 annually, for the electric meter sitting there turned off. Just another fundraising means for the city utilities. Under registration requirements, I'll make a comment. Under the section C, it states that the applicant shall pay at the time of application, the applicant shall pay at the time of the application fee for consideration of the application. I stop there and ask, is it either vacant or it is not? Why is there a consideration? Under section G, actively marketing, the ordinance has determined that an ownership is doing a poor job of selling, leasing, or just gaining occupancy if it takes longer than six months. Thereafter, the city penalizes you as an owner for having done such a poor job. Then you register and you pay the fine. Under assessments, according to this section, the one-time initial registration fee of $285, and it is good for a year, does not consider the possibilities of a building going in and out of a vacant standard within the same year. It can happen very easily in a commercial property. The monthly assessment of $190, which equates to $950 every six months, or $2,090 annually for additional inspections, after being easily qualified as a vacant building, is excessive and totally uncalled for. It would appear that the method to cover the administrative cost of operating this program has now been inserted. The creation of this ordinance is way overdue in Oklahoma City. I applaud the staff for trying so hard. However, the means of generically writing terms to fit both residential and commercial under the same guidelines has not met the better standard or burden within the draft, within the drafted ordinance that the city is known for. I ask the council members to consider a citizens committee with commercial managers like myself, brokers, residential and commercial, a lender, a builder, a developer, and like-kind professionals affected by this ordinance to assist the city, development services, and further drafting guidelines. Thank you.
Jim Legree?
Jim Legree, 3000 United Founders Boulevard. I want to thank Darla and John for their comments. I think John's capsulized most of my comments, so I won't go back over them. With a couple of stipulations here. I want to reinforce the six-month issue. Although this ordinance deals with over 12,000 properties of concern, the number-two bullet point in the impact study says there's no one fix for all of this. This ordinance appears to throw it into one basket. 3% of the numbered properties are commercial, and that's predominantly what we do, though we also do residential management. And six months after permitting, as with all of the concerns we have, we have to come to City Hall to state our case. I mean, we have to hire someone for compliance if we're a larger company and for an individual owner. I've got to go down, come town, say I couldn't get it done in six months, or 60 days if we have the utilities off. So the concerns that I have that John didn't raise is that this deals with banks and foreclosure situations, that Darla, then we also have, what about homes built before 1978? We now have new EPA ordinances that say you have to have RRP-approved companies to do this kind of work if you would do any renovations. I would ask you how many companies are in, have that registration today? Not many, so you're going to wait quite a bit of time, and I bet there are a lot of homes built before 78 in Oklahoma City. Then we also deal with, a side issue is insurance. And I know that doesn't appear to be part of the ordinance, but this year since May, on all the properties we have, our insurance costs have gone up between 80 and 268% in the commercial market. Insurance companies have increased our deductibles on wind and hail from 1% to 2%. So how does that mean? Well, the insurance companies look at us, when we manage properties, they look at our rent rolls each year when we come in and renew our policy, which is somewhat of a control. And then they raise our rates if our occupancy is too high. This is a direct line into them where they can raise their rates now because of market conditions, and then they can look at our vacancy and raise their rates again or cancel us. So that's... So, that's an unintended consequence. Thank you.
All right. Jim, thanks. Jim Snotty.
Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this morning. My name is Jim Snotty. I operate a small, medium-sized commercial property company named Snotty Properties. We're located at 2945 West Tefner Road. I could simply say ditto to everything that these fine folks have just said, and I would personally nominate Darla, John, and Jim as the citizens committee that should help interact, interact with the city. You, you've got a wonderful idea here. We all support it. We're not anti-this particular issue. We're at, we're anti-how it's being proposed with no industry professional input. That's basically the bottom line. I did get a, an opportunity to review the video when the city was here last presenting this, and there was a lot of comments about judgment call. I'm concerned with any code enforcement guy going out and using a judgment call. We haven't seen judgment call being used by city inspectors in seven, eight, 10 years. They used to do it, and it was reasonable at that time. Now, all I hear is per the code. So, we're leaving this with a lot of holes in it where 30 days, 60 days is left up as a judgment call. I wouldn't trust that with any, any young inspector, with all due respect. We've been affected by the real estate market and the financial market. I sat on a very significant Class A medical building that was 30% occupied. Another way to say it is, wouldn't be in compliance with this ordinance, 70% vacant, for almost four years. And we were doing everything we could. We were maintaining it, we were paying our anterorion taxes, we, we were maintaining it as a Class A property. We shouldn't be penalized for maintaining Class A properties. Once again, I would just suggest that the city work with the industry professionals to help fill the holes in this Swiss cheese ordinance. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
All right. Jim, thank you. Kay Floyd. Representative Floyd, good to see you this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all, and thank you, council members. My name is Kay Floyd. My address is 2300 Lincoln Boulevard, room 510, zip code is 73105. I am a member of the House of Representatives. I represent House District 88, which is midtown, uptown Oklahoma City. I'm here because I have been contacted by many of my constituents, by many people that live in my district about this issue. As the council is very well aware, in 2012, you all commissioned a study with GSBS, Reitman Consulting. That study was presented to the council in July of this year, excuse me, June of this year. It is a 72-page study. It is quite intense, it is quite detailed, it's a very good study, and from that, you have the ordinances which are before you today. I think it's important to stay focused on just a few points that were brought up in that study. An estimated 12,000 buildings in Oklahoma City have been vacant six months or longer. More than half of those, 6,000, more than half, have been vacant over two years or longer. The city spends approximately $6.5 million annually for services to these vacant and abandoned properties. That's police, firefighters, code enforcement, and animal welfare. The city loses nearly $20 million in potential revenue every year because of vacant and abandoned properties. And these vacant and abandoned properties reduce the value of neighboring homes by 12 to 29%, depending on the proximity of the vacant and abandoned property. This results in an estimated $2.7 billion reduction in real estate value citywide. The report speaks for itself. I think it's important that the council continue its support of putting a solution into place, and I believe, and my constituents and members in the district, people that live in my district, believe that this new and amended ordinances is a good first step, and I urge the council to please accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Ron Walters.
Hi. Ron Walters, 8501 South Walker, Oklahoma City. I'd like to just say ditto to Kay. You know, I work in some of the not-so-sexy areas in this town, and I was trying to look at the numbers, I was looking at that study a little bit, whether it's 1,200 or 12,000, you know, six months or longer. You know, what I'm here to talk about, if you take a couple of people across the street and a couple of people all around the corner, how many people do we have affected by the devaluation of this stuff in our properties? You know, Walter, that house you mentioned there, is that the one that I wrote the check and paid for the paint and the plywood to board up, to clean it up, to shore it up a little bit, just so we could have a nice-looking slumlord shined-up house, at least that it was boarded up to the minimum standards that Oklahoma City accepts? You know, it's bad. Guys, we're all up here, the commercial realtors have all showed up and forced, we're all trying to find that loophole, to act like this is a bad deal, but it's not a bad deal. We all know what this is all about. We drive by it every day, we live with it, we see it, this abandoned stuff, it's not, you know, and the last time I was here on my last little rant, I didn't congratulate the code enforcement guys. I've dealt with those guys from time to time. You know, I usually call them and I give them a list, you know, this and that, and, you know, I don't think those guys have ever stepped over the line, and, you know, and I'm questioning them, I said, "Man, can't you do anything else? Can't you do anything else?" Most of these properties, we're over there right now at 13th and MLK, city's dropping a million dollars' worth of their money in that neighborhood. I tried to buy two houses on that corner. The city has spent $1,140 boarding them up, they've been mowing them for years, there's $3,000 worth of mowing lanes on them. Offered these guys 8,000 bucks for both of them, which they're not worth $1,000 on a good day. They're tied up, I've talked to five different lawyers, they can't get the title work straightened out. You know, how much more money is the city going to blow on this deal? You know, and, and, and what they're spending trying to keep this stuff up? You know, I'm here to, to, to beg you to pass this thing, to take care of the people, the silent majority that's out here that's getting their finances abused. That guy that picks up his paintbrush on the weekend, works on his house, fixes his roof, fixes up his house, mows his grass, plants the flowers and everything else, while some slumlord or somebody that, you know, had something left to them, or whatever, they've let their property go to pot. You know, we all want to try and act like that we're going to throw some little old woman out on the street, you know, that's just not the case. The fact of the matter is, they're letting the property go to pot. Now, be it a commercial or residential property, either one, doesn't matter. If you don't have the money to take care of the property, you know what? You should sell it. And I actually think this would help our real estate industry, because if we start putting some pressure on it, I've had a couple, there's a property right down there on MLK and 7th right now, guy wanted $150,000. I said, "Look, I'll give you $75,000 cash today." Same deal, the building's probably worth 10 at best. Actually, the back taxes were only 11, that's why I was there, I was going to buy it for taxes. But again, they pulled it out at the last minute. Now, the reason they're wanting, part of the reason they're wanting to impress these deals, like the two little $8,000 houses I tried to buy, they pay $58 a year at taxes, $58 a year. They are three years behind. I'll be standing there in June, you know what? I'll try and buy them at taxes and go the quiet title route. I mean, that's the best deal I can do. But really, how long have they been sitting? You know, over six months or longer? You know, we act like, like the city's going to run over here in 30 days and shut you down. I mean, really, like we don't have enough to do. So, you know, thank you again for your time. Always nice to see you.
Thanks. Georgie Rascoe.
Georgie Rascoe, 1236 Northwest 36th Street, right in front of the beautiful Memorial Park that we just saw in the presentation. And I'm, I can't, I don't know if I can follow Reverend Walters that just spoke, but I totally agree with him and Representative Floyd as well. This is a very, very important issue, and I hope you remember the support that the citizens have shown this issue over the, the past several months. Earlier this year, we had over 160 different neighborhood leaders attend one of, at least three different workshops that we did on this subject that Russell Claus presented. They were very, very supportive of the issue and glad that it had come forward and that people were starting to pay attention to the problem. We, in June, when, or July, whichever it was, when the presentation was made, council chambers was again packed with, with residents that took time off of work to come here and show their support of the presentation. It's hard for citizens to continue to take off work, to come to council meetings to show their support, but I know that the ones that could, could come, and those, a lot of them have notified their council members as well. Please remember that a vacant building, if it's not monitored, it quickly and easily can become an abandoned building, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about buildings that nobody cares for, or nobody's checking on, or nobody's monitoring, and those are the buildings that neighborhood residents have to live around and have to deal with, that lower their property values, that do cause a health and safety hazard, that do eat up all of our resources as a city, because we're now monitoring the building that the owner no longer is, is really monitoring in the way that he should. And that's really the, the crux, I think, of most of this, this ordinance change. It's just taking responsibility for what is already yours. Residents have to do that, residents get, already have to take responsibility, or easily can be cited by code enforcement, and it's time for all businesses, whether they're commercial businesses or residential homes. It doesn't matter, blight is blight. And if you can't maintain the property that you own, then I agree with what the speaker before me said, then maybe you shouldn't own that property. But please don't forget the citizens in making this decision, because abandoned and vacant buildings is a blight on the entire city, but it really hurts the citizens' bottom line, which is their property values. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Georgie. Kristin Vales.
Hello. My address is 2228 Northwest 15th Street, and I'm here representing the Plaza District, Gatewood Historic District, Classen Tin Pin, and my neighborhood of Young Zinglewood. On two blocks around my house, there are nine vacant houses, and my street is one example of many in these neighborhoods. I know we're all pretty familiar with the negative effects vacant properties have in our community, the cost taxpayers that, the cost taxpayers incur, and the properties, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading, and the loss in value to neighboring, neighboring private property owners, and the loss in revenue to the city, the fire hazards, the opportunities they create for illegal activities, and not to mention the visual disrepair that depresses our neighborhoods and diminishes neighborhood pride. I choose to live in the inner-city neighborhoods because I want to be surrounded by neighbors. So, the more, most important opportunity this ordinance provides is the possibility to bring neighbors, to infuse life into my neighborhood. I support and encourage this ordinance and the positive impact it will have to encourage movement, these properties, and instill pride, and bring neighbors to my neighborhood, so I can serve them and encourage the investment in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. Jim Perick.
Jim Perick, 13729 Hillahay Drive. I think everyone here is in agreement that something needs to be done with dilapidated buildings, and if that is what, where this ordinance stopped, I think we'd be fine. But this ordinance goes far beyond just dealing with dilapidated buildings. You know, I work in the commercial side, and I think you all know, the vast majority of commercial building owners take care of their vacant buildings. You know, there's no reason for Bob Howard and Mickey Clag to need to register their vacant buildings in midtown. There's no reason for Nick Prefteks across the street to need to register his buildings. John takes care of his vacant buildings, as you heard earlier, and that's true across the city with most commercial buildings. You know, this is really Obamacare for vacant buildings, where the healthy buildings pay for the sick ones, and the, this ordinance needs to be modified to where it just deals with the sick buildings. And I would argue that the, the modification either needs to be just to restrict this to dilapidated buildings, not all vacant buildings, or eliminate, make an exception for commercial buildings, because as the study showed, the vast majority of the problem really is single-family homes. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Robert Elder.
Good morning. Robert Elder. My address is 8801 Northwestern. And first of all, I'm delighted that you're pursuing taking care of the dilapidated buildings. That is something that the city absolutely needs. The program that the Action Center has been on for the last 10 or 20 years has been a huge benefit to the city, and addressing the vacant and dilapidated buildings is another step towards improving the city. I own several hundred houses and a few commercial buildings, so I am someone who will be affected by what you all are talking about. I have two suggestions. We certainly all agree that something needs to be done with the abandoned buildings. However, some vacancy is inevitable. You cannot have 100% occupancy of all the buildings all the time. So, you have to have some allowance for turnover, for rehab, for repairs. I suggest that you consider changing the, the time that the building is empty to one year. That certainly allows you to take care of all of the abandoned buildings, because the abandoned buildings that blight our cities have been abandoned for years, not months. The other thing is, I listen to the commercial realtors talk, and basically, I hear that they're asking for an exception for commercial real estate. Many of the worst problems are empty apartment complexes, and let's be sure that we don't have an exception for empty apartment complexes, because that's clearly one of the worst issues. I don't know that much about the large office buildings, and so, I don't really want to address that, but the empty apartment buildings do need to be covered and regulated by this just as much as houses need to be. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Robert. Sharon Rundell. Shannon, my mistake.
Shannon Rundell, 431 Northwest 20th, and I'm here representing your nine historic preservation districts. And we formed an alliance, you know, back in the winter, and we met again last night. We've worked with Russell on this. Those of us who live, I do love it, because when we moved to, most of us, when we moved to our neighborhoods, these were inner-city neighborhoods. They were comeback neighborhoods. We're now urban neighborhoods, so we've come a long way. We're still fighting some of this commercial dilapidation, and I really wasn't going to speak to that at all, but I think you all are as proud of 23rd Street's comeback as we are. Dilapidated buildings on 23rd, dilapidated vacant on 23rd, has plagued our neighborhoods for years, and now, we're finally getting something done with that, but there are still vacant buildings. Plaza District, Gatewood, those neighborhoods, until the Plaza District came back, that was vacant, dilapidated, abandoned. And so, I just think that, I agree that large commercial office buildings may be different, but we still can't ignore the commercial aspects, because all of the inner-city neighborhoods are but commercial. We have big office buildings next to houses, and that does affect the neighborhoods. So, I would just say, we're in total support of this, and we hope that you all will carry it forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. All right. That concludes the, the stack, and we're having a final vote on this, it's scheduled for December 3rd, and obviously, there'll be a lot of work that goes on between now and then. Pat, do you want to say something?
A couple of quick questions. I heard nobody speak against the ordinance, per se, this morning, but it did seem like there needs to be, based on what I've heard this morning and from some of my constituents, some differentiation in the application between commercial and residential, presidential properties. Second thing is, the city of Chicago put in something, I guess, a year or so ago, and it was overturned by the Illinois State Supreme Court. Has our ordinance been checked against this regulation, state regulations here, so that we won't have that problem here?
We believe that our, our ordinance is, is legal. We would present it if, if it wasn't. And the municipal council's office, Cindy Richards is here, Kenny's been doing a lot of work on it, they, we've had a cadre of attorneys working on this, and it's, we've, we've really, I think, gone inside and out, and, and believe it to be fully legal.
Councilman Ryan, we have thoroughly checked our ordinance draft against state law. There were a number of things that we could not agree to put into the ordinance that I know perhaps planning was wanting and that sort of thing, because we knew, for instance, you can't, you can't make a punitive fee under state law. That was one of the things that was discussed, about being a deterrence factor, is raising the fee the longer a property is vacant and that sort of thing. But in Oklahoma, the law says a fee has to cover the actual administrative costs, and ours does. So, there are a number of things we couldn't put in the ordinance. We've drafted up some legislation to help us to be able to do more at the local level than we currently can, but yes, it's good as it stands under state law.
One question, quick question. You mentioned legislation. Does that legislation have to be in place before we can adopt this ordinance?
No.
Or is it independent?
What we currently have, we can do under current law. What we currently have, we can do under current law.
That's good. Thank you.
When the presentation was originally made by Russell and his consultant back in the summer, we talked about a three-phase approach. One would be to do what we can do under existing state law. Phase one. That's what we're doing today. Phase two was some future things that would require state law changes. And the third thing we talked about was ultimately going into some type of land bank if we desire to do so. So, today, we are, this month, we're on phase one.
Mayor?
Yeah. Pete?
I'd like to think about the fact that we're -- this ordinance is not on for adoption today. It's on to be transferred in two weeks, heard in two weeks. It seems to me there's a substantial argument has been made for some kind of separation between residential property and commercial property. I'd like to ask that staff come back with some suggestions along those lines. There is a possibility of doing this by passing this ordinance as it presently exists and giving staff instructions to start with as many properties that there are out there, since we're not adding staff. If they started with the residential property, it would be quite a while before they got to the commercial side. And I'd like to look at the idea of perhaps staff sitting down with some people on the commercial side and seeing about if there could be differences. I also recognize that one of the big problems with the commercial side is the abhorrent problem, is that commercial properties set there that ought to have high values, they permit to deteriorate down to where, as the gentleman said back here, somebody wanted, I mean, the property worthless, but they're paying $56 a year in taxes. I mean, that's -- we can't ignore that. I mean, I know you guys on the commercial side, all of you guys are talking about properties that are well-maintained. We're not talking about those properties. There might be a way for staff to meet with you and figure out a way to avoid some of those problems for well-maintained on-the-outside properties, change the definition of vacancy. I think that's all possible. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, because I will tell you that it is a huge, huge problem on this city. Vacant, abandoned, unoccupied properties, not just in terms of how they impact the neighborhoods, which is huge, as Georgie and several of you have made that argument. It's impactful on our budget, because they don't pay the kind of taxes they ought to be paid. So, I would like to ask staff to come back within a couple of weeks when this comes back with suggestion, one, of how to separate the two, and perhaps an idea that we start enforcement on the residential side first, given this amount of staff that we have, and give us 60 days perhaps before enforcement starts on the commercial side. They're going to have their hands full on the residential side at the front side anyway. It's not like we're deferring something, because I think Bob will tell you that he doesn't have the staff to attack 12,000 houses right off in the first day anyway.
Well, there's another aspect of this that I don't think was reflected in all of the comments that we heard, and that is that if a property is being actively marketed, then it will not be subject to these penalties or fines or whatever.
That's correct. The owner of the property, if he can show us that it's been actively marketed up to six months, he has up to six months, he wouldn't have to register. It's after that six months, then he would be considered a vacant property, and that's kind of reflected in the study.
I'm going to listen to what the people have said, and I think there are some merit to it on the commercial side. Although, I don't want to give you too much hope, because I will tell you that the biggest cancer, I think, is the unoccupied commercial properties that are rundown and--
And are the industrial properties lumped in with the commercial properties?
No, this is just commercial. Industrial's not included.
Okay.
But if it could be brought back to us with the idea that we're going to, one, look at a differentiation between commercial and residential, and, two, an understanding that we're going to give the commercial side, say, 30 days, or, I mean, three months, maybe, to sit down with maybe the idea of a group to work together to try to figure out the differences. I don't think it's going to slow down the enforcement of the ordinance, because Bob and I had a conversation about it, about how fast it can start, and unless we add a whole lot more folks, it's going to take a while before it gets started.
Meg's being patient over here, I think she wanted to say something.
Really, I appreciate it. I just, number one, want to thank everybody for coming down here. I've had great feedback, not even on both sides of this issue, because I think everybody in the room is in agreement, but with the fact that there probably are a couple of areas that we might be able to improve. So, I really want to say thank you to everybody that's taken the time to read the ordinance so carefully and to, you know, come back to us with, I think, some real solutions. If we ever needed an example of why we have public hearings on these ordinances before we adopt them, this is a perfect example. And so, I want to echo Pete's comments. I think we need to go forward as quickly as we can with the residential component of this. And just specifically, I do think there's a little concern about the definition between commercial and industrial that we might be able to clear up. And I think there are a couple of other points that maybe we could discuss. So, getting a group of citizens together to help us fine-tune this, I think, is a perfect idea. And I particularly want to thank Representative Floyd for being here. I know we do have some issues at the legislature, and I understand you're willing to help champion some of those for us, including going as far as talking about a land bank and some really creative things we could do. So, appreciate your support and anything that we can do to help you. You know, we will do that.
I think there's also opportunity for a private sector interest in how we define actively marketed. It seems like a nice term that might mean something different from me to you. So, I think staff would appreciate feedback in that area as well. Any other comments or questions from council before we move on?
Yes.
I heard Pete say that the commercial was the biggest cancer. Did you mean that, that the commercial's bigger than the residential?
It depends on which side of it you look at. It depends on whether you look at the abhorrent side or the other side. On the abhorrent side, I think it's without question it is.
Because I've kind of always been under the assumption that the residential is the biggest, because of the simple percentages, that 3% is commercial and so--
As given too hyperbole as I am, that probably could easily be an overstatement. Okay.
All right. Ready to move on? Larry?
I'd like to ask Bob a question. Bob, apartment houses, commercial or residential?
They're considered residential. The ordinance right now defines it as residential or commercial occupancy. So, that's why I say that industrial's not in there. If the council wants industrial buildings in there, we need to change that definition to include that.
From my perspective, my biggest problem in Ward Three are the apartments and houses, not the commercial. And so, from Ward Three's perspective, I would like to move forward as expeditiously as possible, and whether they're separated, industrial and commercial, or whether it's lumped in, I mean, residential and commercial. I want to go after the residential, which now what I understand is the combination of apart multifamily and single-family dwellings. And my next question, Bob, is very quick. The concerns that were raised here, the items, which all seem to be legitimate concerns, i.e., a house that is pre-1978 construction and in need for, you know, a licensed person to do any renovation. Is this new to you all, the draft of this, or has this come out, and is it, the answers to this all behind the scene in the ordinance we are? Are these concerns new, or were they known before today?
Several of these things are new. We worked with legal and the planning department, and we used, we looked at other cities' current ordinances, and we modeled them using, you know, those issues. But as Cindy said, I mean, everything that is in the ordinance, we feel is legally enforceable. And that's really what we were trying to do.
Okay. Were the out-of-state owners--
There's going to be a problem with out-of-state ownership until we can get some legislation passed. We can require them to register. We can issue citations through code enforcement when they don't. But we have limited jurisdiction in our municipal court. We can't send our marshals outside of our city limits to arrest anybody and bring them back to our city. So, that's going to be a problem. Again, we have drafted some legislation to proceed against the property itself. And then, if there's a guilty finding against the property, we basically have to deal with it over at county, filing a lien and that sort of thing against the property.
Did our study assess what percent were out-of-state owners, or estimate how many?
I think it did. Russell Claus would be able to speak to that better than I am.
Did the study estimate the disproportionate amount of city resources that were going to vacant and abandoned buildings past a certain point? I mean, how did we come up with six months and 30 days versus a year or another time period?
We definitely, on drafting it, took our instruction from the planning department, from Russell. He'd have to speak again to the details of that plan. They are not set in stone. That's certainly a discretionary call at what council considers to be a nuisance in this city. So, I do want to clarify that everybody has at least 90 days, because the shortest amount of time that we have in here is that 60 days of water or electric cutoff for the definition of vacancy to kick in, and then you have another 30 days after that to register. So, really, 90 days is the minimum registration time that you have. After that, we all know that a declaration of needing dilapidation or needing boarding and securing is a longer process than that. So, there are several issues that keep this from immediately happening to anybody.
So, the six-month marketing, is that just for commercial, or is it residential as well?
It's both.
Okay. Can I ask Russell just-- Russell, can you just talk to timing and what those, the impact of those that are more than a year old versus those that are less than a year old?
Well, I think the intent of the program was to go after the ones that have been vacant the longest. So, as somebody pointed out, more than half of the identified buildings have been vacant for longer than two years. So, that was the intent there. But in addition to that was to not allow properties to continue to feed into that longer vacancy period, so that you didn't, the properties didn't go from six to 12 to two to 20, which has been the problem. There's been no disincentive for that in the past.
So, are you comfortable with the 90-day limit, or did we, how did we arrive at that?
Well, there were recommendations in the report about the timeframe for vacancy, and they had talked about a six-month vacancy, the actual mechanics of when you include properties on the register as being a sort of multi-departmental discussion. And I think that's flexible. I mean, the intent is not penalize people who are doing the right thing. You know, we understand that the market dynamics vary, and they vary over time, and some properties are harder to move. You're trying to sell the GM facility, for example, that might take longer than six months. So, just using an extreme example.
Yeah. So, I guess I'd just ask the council, I mean, there seems like there's interest in separating residential and commercial. Is there interest in the council looking at the timeframe, or are we okay with that number?
Well, my view is if we would separate them, but we don't have to separate them now. But we could, that could be, that could all be done down the road when we get a report back. If we had an agreement that would say you don't start on anything but residential, and you don't start on anything but the oldest in terms of how you start to bring the ordinance online, you've got six months or a year to work out the details with regard to changes that might be made, and you could get citizen input in doing it. Seems like, I like that idea better, because you get the ordinance in place, and then you're amending something that's in place, rather than this kind of gauzy idea out here of, well, we need to fix them.
Well, Pete, the problem I have with putting an ordinance in effect with sort of a promise to fix it later, it's like kicking the can down the road. We've got a good ordinance here. It needs to be, I think, cleaned up to make a distinction between commercial and residential properties. But I think we ought to make that distinction before we adopt the ordinance. And it might delay it two weeks, but I do think that's an important consideration.
Well, I think kicking the can down the road is not passing an ordinance. I mean, you can teach it round pat, or you can teach it flat.
No, I would delay this two weeks for the final adoption.
The idea is we need to get an ordinance in place to start with what's wrong now, and we can amend it later on.
Well, but I think that amend it later on is sort of a hollow promise. We may or may not be able to amend it later on, depending on--
Worst-case scenario, we wouldn't amend it.
Can I put some context?
So would.
This a little bit, this is a big ordinance. There's a lot of vacant property out there. As you know, right now on code enforcement, basically, we do complaint-based code enforcement that's out there. We have areas in the city where we do proactive, and the councilman will ask us to do some proactive things from time to time. But for the lion's share of the code enforcement we do, we do it on complaint base. This is different. We're going to be moving into an area where we're going to be initiating this. It's going to take time. It's going to get time to get us up, to get the inspectors hired and to get this going. And we can certainly start with residential, as far as we do the proactive things, Councilman White. We can clearly start in that area. But if we were to get a complaint on some commercial, we would probably pursue that too. If somebody's complaining that this is a vacant property, it's been vacant for 10 years, you need to do something about it, I assume we would go in that direction. But by the time we're able to get inspectors put in place and going, it's going to take some time to get there. We'd be happy to meet with the realtors again, try to come up with some solutions and hear their concerns. We want to do that and get that in place. But we modify ordinances all the time. We, you know, we, I think it'd be very naive to sit here today and say, this ordinance is perfect, and it's going to stand the test of time for 20 years. I just don't think that. If you look at the next item on the agenda, we're modifying our PUD and SPUD standards. We're going to improve them. We're going to make them, hopefully, we're going to improve them. We're going to make them clearer, I think, as we go forward. We do that from time to time. We bring ordinances back to clarify and to make them better because of the experiences we've found in the field. And I would anticipate this ordinance at times will have that same type of--
I have a problem, though, adopting an ordinance that we know is flawed. I mean, it's sort of like Nancy Pelosi saying, we'll find out what's in this act after we even pass it. I don't want to do that. I want to have an ordinance that we can stand up and say, we tried our best to get a good ordinance passed. And if it takes two weeks more to separate commercial and residential properties, who seem to present different problems to the city to deal with, I think we ought to do it that.
Okay. I mean, I think we have kind of given guidance that we would like to see the staff work with the commercial and to see what it would look like separated, right? I mean, we've already kind of, I mean, I think Pete kind of articulated that, so, which I think is a good idea. Well, and I encourage-- To at least see the option. --to stay engaged here for the next couple of weeks, and we'll revisit it on December 3rd and potentially vote on it then. Meg, or is that David? Is that your light?
Yes.
You want to say something?
Well--
Make this the final comment, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Your Honor. A week ago, I began receiving phone calls from people who have an interest in this. And I think what we need is a meeting within the next two weeks prior to this coming back to council to provide an opportunity to receive input on an informal basis, as well as provide education to those who have an interest in this. I'm not suggesting that this become a committee to where, you know, some resolution will come out of this committee meeting. The staff will still be responsible for coming back, whatever recommendations that they feel we should vote on in two weeks, but with the input and information provided by members of the real estate industry and just citizens in general. So, I would recommend that we call for a meeting, you know, where the staff would provide information, receive input, and then based upon that process, come back to us with any revised recommendations in two weeks. I'd like to see it go forward. But today, just today, a lot of great comments were raised, and I'm not sure if we had considered all of those prior to formalizing this particular statute. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. We need a motion to move this forward to December 3rd. Cast your votes. Item moves to December 3rd. I want to thank everyone who came down and expressed opinions today. As Jim mentioned, item 8E is an ordinance that's introduced today, and it cleans up some language concerning our PUDs and our SPUDs.
And Aubrey Hamontry is here to explain this to us.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Aubrey Hamontry with the City Planning Department, trying to see if I can pull up the presentation. My handy assistant, Russell Claus, looks like he may be able, I think it's minimized, Russell, at the bottom of the screen. Okay. Just a little background, this process of developing these amendments has taken about a year. We came, I think, within the last year in small group council briefings to let you know what we were doing with this ordinance, and I'm just going to give you a real quick presentation to go over the major changes. to go over the major changes. I can't control that from a, there we go. So this outlines the process that we've been through. We actually have been working on a list of things as we've used the PUD ordinance over the years. We've, just like Jim had mentioned, anytime you work with an ordinance, you start to recognize that certain definitions are questioned and clarity and meaning of the way that it's applied needs to be updated and changed. So staff had kept a list of things that needed to be worked on. We've met with the people who mostly do PUDs. A group of developers helped us identify some issues and problems that they had had with the language in the ordinance. And through a series of many, many meetings, we've come out with something that I think everybody is supporting. So for those of you who don't know, out in our audience today, what a planned unit development is, it's a specialized type of zoning district. This is commonly used by municipalities for large-scale development, negotiated individually, and they typically incorporate innovative land use techniques within a large coordinated development. And the purpose for these is to ensure that someone can have flexibility from the traditional development controls of our other types of zoning in our cities, such as C3, commercial, or a single family. This allows them to be more creative and imaginative and innovative in the site and building design. It also is meant to incorporate other public benefits and amenities in that project that would be beyond what the standard zoning would be able to achieve. So the purpose of us modifying the existing planned unit development ordinance is so that we can improve the structure of that ordinance. We had language we needed to clarify and definitions that we needed to include. We also wanted to codify some requirements and procedures that were currently in practice but were not explicitly outlined in the code. And we believe that what we've developed is going to provide better direction to the applicants when they come in and put in their redevelopment proposal or the rezoning proposal, and also staff and decision-makers such as you who are approving those planned unit development proposals. So taking you through a few of the changes, we had minor wording corrections and cleanup. We reorganized so that it's easier for someone to apply and use. We also were able to add some specificity into the definition of a planned unit development. And we also have a simplified planned unit development, which is a smaller one. It did not have a definition, so we created one for that. We also described within those definitions when PUDs are typically used and when SPUDs are typically used. We updated the purpose and intent of planned unit development. Cities like to encourage that you gain efficiency, a developer is able to gain efficiency in a PUD beyond what you could do in a standard zoning district. And that would allow the developer to maybe do clustering of buildings in open space areas to achieve greater densities in a portion of that development and maybe do some conservation areas in open space in another portion of it. We also encourage that circulation systems are looked at to achieve greater connectivity within the development and to areas outside of that development. We would like to encourage that people conserve natural features or environmentally sensitive areas or historic resources if they exist on the site. We also encourage that people can strengthen and enhance a sense of neighborhood and community character within that development. Other cities also define goals and objectives within their PUD ordinances. Ours did not contain any. These goals and objectives reinforce the goals and objectives listed in our comprehensive plan, and that we're trying to minimize any adverse impacts of that planned unit development on surrounding properties. We also are trying to encourage that they contribute to revitalization of redevelopment areas if they exist in a redevelopment area, that they promote compatible infill development, that they also maintain consistency with our comprehensive plan. We also would like that any planned unit development overall contributes to the general prosperity, health, safety, and welfare. An important piece of this PUD amendment is that it outlines appropriate use of PUDs and SPUDs, that they discourage rezoning to a PUD just to avoid certain requirements that are in a base zoning district that they could seek a variance through the Board of Adjustment to achieve. We do encourage the use of PUDs for specialized uses when necessary. For example, if PUDs are sought to rezone inside a design district because a specific use was not permitted in that design district, that may be appropriate. However, we're trying to encourage rezoning inside design districts to absorb all of the development regulations and guidelines of that design district for consistency, and that if anyone chooses to bring those in, that they would still be subject to design review from the design review body. Some middle requirements for a PUD had been modified so that the SPUD design statement has, is in the code now. Before, those design requirements were listed in the application but not in the code. We're also requiring now the simplified planned unit developments to have a very basic master plan. Typically, the applicant would go ahead and submit this, but this is now a general requirement. And if a PUD or SPUD decides to rezone inside a design district and chooses to maintain those standards, we would like them to submit the same level of detail in their specific plan as would be required for the design district's review. We also were able to include some waivers for submitting that specific plan for a PUD. If the site has already been developed and the PUD is proposing no new buildings or parking on the site, it doesn't really make sense to have to submit a specific plan. Also, if the use is agriculture or recreational, and they're only putting an incidental structure like a maintenance building under a certain size, it wouldn't really make sense to make them submit a specific plan. If they've already submitted something in detail enough to satisfy the requirements of the specific plan, that's also another opportunity for a waiver. So as I mentioned, we had worked with Development Services very closely. Development Services Department actually administers this section of the zoning code, and the planning department works with them in reviewing PUDs for conformance with the comprehensive plan or if they're in design districts. So JJ Chambliss is here, Russell and Bob are here. So if you have any questions that I can't answer, they'll be available.
And this ordinance is being introduced today. It will be, a public hearing will be set for December 3. So council will have another opportunity to ask questions then if you want to ask something today. Yeah?
Sorry, Aubrey, if I could, I just want to kind of clarify that we have worked with the design review districts to be, you know, I understand there's a little bit of a discouragement of using PUDs within design districts. And so I like the way that you crafted this to require that they incorporate all of the design review aspects into their PUD or SPUD.
Yes, it actually encourages that they do. It does not require that they do. But we do recognize sometimes there is a need, if there is a use that's not permitted in that design district, that the only tool that they might have is to rezone. And in that case, we're working with applicants hand in hand to make sure that whatever they are doing is still compatible with what's happening around them. So, and most of our rezoning proposals have done just that. They've incorporated all the design guidelines and regulations that they can, and they've also been subject to the design review process. So it's been a very easy thing, working with them behind the scenes. So this code amendment basically just puts that into a standardized requirement.
Thank you.
All right. How about a motion then to move this forward?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
And JJ and Russell here, here's the context of the question. Has the, there seems to be some debate that's going on at the Planning Commission dealing with PUDs. And when that debate occurs, there always seems to be a lawyer who's for the applicant, and there's a lawyer for the protesters. Has the makeup of this new arrangement here been run by those parties there, and are they in agreement with the, with the process and the definitions, et cetera?
We had a lot of participation from people who use PUDs frequently in the city in going through this, and they, they were at the table for dozens of meetings. And I believe that we've gotten to a point where we are all comfortable with this wording.
So they're happy, and the Planning Commission is also happy?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. This item
moves on. Public hearing, December 3. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
And a second. Cast your votes. Those items move forward. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
And a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8H is a request for a revocable permit in Ward 7 to hold the Oklahoma City Christmas River Parade. John, you okay with this? All right, is there anyone here representing this, this event? All right, we have a motion. How about a second? Cast your votes. That permit is issued. Item 8I, I understand from staff, we do need executive session on this item. So how about a motion to move 8I to executive session?
Do we not need it?
No.
All right. Then how about a motion to, to pass the resolution? Cast your votes. Item 8I passes unanimously. Item 8J, I understand we do need executive session on that one?
Move to executive session.
All right, and a second. Cast your votes, and item 8J moves to executive session. Item 8K, I understand we do not need executive session on that item?
That's correct.
Okay. Second. Cast your votes. That item is struck. Item 8L is claims recommended for denial. We have a few people who have signed up to speak on claims recommended for denial today. Frida Arnold?
She.
Oh, she wants it struck.
Yes, we are going to strike that for her to submit additional information. We'll bring it back in the future.
Okay, we'll be striking item 8L 1B. Jimmy Barisell? Yeah, you can sit up here, Jimmy. Good morning.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Jimmy Baroschek, 510 South First Street, UConn, Oklahoma.
Okay. What can you tell us about the claim?
I just want to state there was inadequate barriers at the site.
Okay, I don't know the details. If you could, so there was, okay, now I'm handing some pictures. So were you the driver of this vehicle?
Yes, sir.
And went off the street. Was this in relationship to the flooding that took place? Or was, how did this road become in the condition that it's in?
Yes, yeah, no, on June 1. The storm was on May 31.
So this is June 1. This is the day after.
Washed-out bridge.
Washed-out bridge. And your car went off, off the road in the washed-out area? And your suggestion is that it should have been well-marked or should have been marked previously?
Well, it was marked, "Road closed" and "Not bridge out for one." As you can see, my skid marks in that one picture, they go right underneath that barricade that wasn't there.
Yeah, there were no barriers there.
Not in my lane, though.
Okay. Well, let's check with city staff and see what our legal parameters are on this issue.
Yes, our, excuse me, our, the evidence we received from the street maintenance department is that on June 1, that's when the bridge was washed out. We went out at 2:10 in the morning and erected, erected barricades and "Road closed" signs at the site. That was on June 1. Then it was about 24 hours later when the claimant was out at the site and says, basically, his version is that there was only one barricade and one "Road closed" sign at that time. And we had no, we actually hadn't received any notice. If, if one of the barricades was absent, we hadn't received any notice. Our records don't, don't show or show that we had erected actually four barricades the first day and two "Road closed" signs. And we had no notice within that 24 hours that any of them had been moved, if that, if that was the fact. And then on June 2, after claimant had his, his accident, we went out the next morning of June 2 and put up additional barricades to give more advance warning. So basically, that's why we had, say we're not negligent in this particular case, is because we had erected barricades based on our records and we didn't have any notice that any barricade was missing.
So Jimmy, you came along this situation, and it looked like one lane was barricaded, but the lane you were in was not, and so you proceeded on?
Right before the bridge, there's a barricade and the traffic, the lane coming the other way. But there was not, well, you can see my skid marks going to the barricade that they put up afterwards.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see the skid marks, but I don't doubt that there were some there. Is, is this the type of claim that gives council a level of discretion, or is this covered by state law that would not allow the council to have discretion on whether or not we pay the claim?
This is really a fact question, but there, we have no evidence. Based on our records, the city's version is that we did erect the barricades, and we had no notice that a barricade had been removed, if that was in case the fact. That's what our records show. And there's, it's really a fact question. We can't, we can't tell you categorically, but we had no notice that a barricade had been removed, and our evidence shows that we had erected four barricades. So essentially, council would have to find that we actually in fact had not erected four barricades, even though our.
Let me ask this. In the pictures that we're seeing, there's two barricades in the direction that I guess Jimmy was, was coming from. Did we add another barrier, or where was the barrier when, when we arrived? I mean, I don't think we're suggesting that he somehow went around those two barriers.
These were his, these were his photos taken the next morning.
Yeah, but there's, there's two barriers up there then. Did we add another barrier? Where did that barrier come from?
We actually had gone up, out the next morning and added additional barricades.
Yeah.
So, and there's nothing on our records to indicate that any of the barricades we originally put out were, were missing. If council wants, we could defer this to seek additional detailed information from the department and see when they went out there the next morning, if they found the original barricade still there, or if they found that they had been moved.
Well, Kenny, that's, that's the weird thing. If we put two up, and then we went back the next day and we had to put another one up, something must have happened to one. I mean, I can't imagine anybody would go out and move a barricade, but maybe they did.
I think the question was whether it was moved or whether it was added. I think that's probably where.
Moved or added.
Or added. I don't make sure we know that today.
Well, was there, was there no police report either on this, of the wreck? Now, that I'm not sure. Was there a police accident report in the file?
No. So did you file a police report?
No.
No.
See, I had a wreck years and years ago on Highway 66 going to Votec, and I tried to call UConn Police and Oklahoma City Police, and they said if there's no actual damage to any property, then they don't need to show up. So just had some four-wheel drive to pull it out.
My suggestion is we either pay it or defer it to get more information, but I'll take a council's, a motion in either direction. Pat's, Pat's motion is to defer this for two weeks to get council more information.
Yes, we'll get with the Streets Maintenance Division and get detailed information about it.
Okay. Jimmy, we're glad you're okay. And I know it was a harrowing night. I'm sure this, can only imagine the details of what you went through that night. But let us get some more information and see if we can't figure out a way to justify the payment.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on the deferral, and it passed unanimously. Miriam Wiley and Thomas Pierce?
Hello, my address is 2008 Northwest 36th Street. And I was walking outside the build outside City Hall on September 1. And I fell as I was walking out the door because of the steps. And as you can see, it tore up my nose, and it, my ankle ended up with a big knot on it. And I'm still having problems with my ankle and my wrist from where I caught myself. And I'm, I'm still having, I guess, some problems with that. But I was wondering why there wasn't any, like, signs out saying that there was a step that you needed to step down? Because I really didn't see it when I was going out, and then I just stepped down, and that was it.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, this is huge. And somebody else that worked, works in this building was telling me she fell too.
Well, let me, let me ask, is, is we have to have a legal responsibility to be able to pay your claim?
Right.
Is there a legal responsibility to list signage when stairs are forthcoming leaving a government building?
There's no evidence to show that the steps are dangerous or anything like that or negligently maintained.
No.
And also.
Just to notify that, that steps or stairway is coming, we don't necessarily have to have a sign for that.
Right.
Well, and, you know, there's a, there's a railing, a metal rail up. But you know what? That's nowhere near the steps. That's after the steps. And if that was there, I could have caught that. And I didn't even see it. I didn't even catch it. I didn't have a chance to. I just hit the ground, and there it was.
Yeah. We're, we're minimally sympathetic. I'm looking for council support to, in one direction or another. I'm looking for council support to, to, in one direction or another, uh, because a few people walk up those stairs more than us.
Well, yeah, and I mean, you know what, I'm lucky.
So the staff has recommended a denial, I guess I'm looking for a motion. Does the, the staff, uh, do we, more information needed or do we want to make a motion to go ahead and deny the claim?
Now, I may ask a question.
Yeah.
Uh, have we had any other accidents similar to this at that particular location?
Not that I'm aware of.
If I hadn't fallen, probably nobody else could because with my record of falling downstairs. Anyway, I would move to deny the application.
Well, that doesn't make me feel any better.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second to leave it on the claims for denial and I, as I stated earlier, we're very sorry that it happened. I just don't know that the facts or the laws on the side of us being able to pay your claim. So we're going to recommend to deny it. And you would have legal options across the street at the Oklahoma County Courthouse if you wanted to pursue it further.
Okay, it might also, my other thing that I'm here for is, I guess it kind of goes along with what everybody was here for on the abandoned, abandoned buildings and stuff. I have a problem with vagrants in my neighborhood. My oldest son had to chase somebody out of my trash that was put out to be picked up this morning. This is like the second or third time we've had to chase these people off. This is becoming quite a problem over there. We've had some businesses.
Where do you live, Miriam?
I live over off of Thirty-Sixth by Penn. I'm on the, what, east side of Penn.
Well, why don't we request some additional enforcement from the police department on this area?
They come out, but all they, they don't do anything, you know? I mean, it's like, not a big problem, I guess. I don't know, there's some businesses over there that have closed down. And there's other businesses that call them all the time. I mean, it's like a constant, you have to have them on speed dial. It's just not good. And it's bad for the neighborhood. I'm worried because I've got a, an neighbor that is well in her, what, probably late eighties. I don't know what these people are capable of doing.
Miriam, thanks for coming down. We'll, we'll look into it further.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight L, this is claims recommended for denial. It passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Okay, second, anyone here hoping to speak and any item listed under item nine? It passes unanimously. We're on now to item ten. I tell you, we, we have a couple of gentlemen here from Gallup, they've flown in and they have planes to catch. So I'm going to suggest that we bring that up from city manager reports and allow them to do a report, I think fifteen minutes or so. Is that what you guys need? All right, and then we'll get back to items from council. But with that, I'll interview Dan Withers and Joe Daley from Gallup.
Well, good morning. Thank you very much for inviting us. I know that you're at the end of your agenda and I will faithfully keep to our fifteen minute allocation to keep things moving along. The, what I'm here to talk to you about are the, the results of the survey research that Gallup. Let's see, what do I press? Oops. There we go. The Gallup recently did on behalf of the city, uh, this was a measure of well-being of the residents of Oklahoma City. Uh, our survey instrument of choice was the Gallup Healthways Wellbeing Index, which is a part of the Gallup National Poll that's been administered to about 1.9 million randomly selected American adults since two thousand eight. So it's an ongoing big national poll, uh, phone-based, landline and cell, all the things that we need to do to have good projectability. We set about to do this research to give you some insight in the well-being of Oklahoma City in particular. Uh, also include a number of custom questions that are not a part of the Wellbeing Index that are of keen interest to this particular constituency. Uh, and then set about to kind of summarize that. So a full-blown report is forthcoming, I think that's coming before the end of this month. Uh, but I just want to take you through a few top-line results here. Some of these are intuitive, some of them are less so. Uh, so for example, green space, walkability, some of the things Oklahoma City has been investing robustly in in recent years are very good and smart things to do from a well-being perspective. There are some things that are less intuitive that I want to call out for you and bring to your attention based upon our study of high well-being cities nationwide. So with that preamble, uh, I'll move forward. There was a qualitative phase, what I'm going to focus on is the quantitative phase. One thousand randomly selected adults inside of Oklahoma City. The data are weighted according to Census Bureau Statistics, so that accounts for the non-response bias. Make sure that everybody's represented properly inside of our sample. We did do a geographic analysis based on zip codes around the city. So we took twenty clusters. Uh, didn't have enough data at our disposal to look at twenty, twenty different slices, but we did group them together into four macro clusters. And these are listed here. I'll be referencing these over the next few slides that I'll go over, but that's kind of what it looks like. You'll have the north, northeast, east is cluster four, which is your most affluent area, highest median income, highest median house condo value. Central is in the heart of the city, which is on the other end of the spectrum. And then our other two clusters, kind of the south, southeast, southwest. And central west, northwest are sort of in between. But just to sort of frame it up for you, these were the four clusters. If you look at the next slide, that, uh, kind of illustrates it, how they break down. Uh, we did, uh, demand that we had geographic contiguous zip codes. We don't have more in our sample frame, which is why cluster two is split in half down along the south. But those are the four, again, just based on population, income, uh, housing value, um, and geographic location. That's what we wound up with within the confines of the sample that we had. So they're not perfectly separated into four equally sized groups, but it does give us at least two hundred residents, respondents in each one of those clusters, more than enough to get a pretty good handle on what it looks like. The other thing that we did that I wanted to call out before I moved into some, a few top-line results is that we did go back to the National Wellbeing Index from two thousand ten and two thousand eight. And I went ahead and pulled data from these very same zip codes that we'd collected randomly, weighted the data and actually took a look at some of the trends over time. So not only did we geographically differentiate inside of the city to look at where high well-being and low well-being differences might be found, we also have some trend data that I can share with you to help kind of level set and frame up, uh, some of the findings. The well-being in Oklahoma City is rather low compared to the hundred and ninety or so cities that we look at and report upon every single year. It tends to follow, uh, income. Income, uh, is a pretty good predictor of well-being, so cluster four is where you find the highest levels of well-being overall. Uh, that's up in the north, northeast. The central region, uh, cluster three, not surprisingly, is where well-being overall is at the lowest. Uh, do want to emphasize that when we talk about well-being, it's not just about physical wellness. This includes things like basic access and work environment, uh, healthy behaviors, emotional health. So by design, this is a comprehensive measure that casts a wide net. With most of these well-being indicators, they're pretty much unchanged if we compare just to two thousand and ten. Go back the last three years. You go back to two thousand and eight pre-recession, then you kind of have other things that are in play. So we'll just focus on two thousand and ten. A few things have worsened, health insurance, for example, has gone down from eighty-one percent in two thousand and eight to seventy-seven percent today. So that's an example of one that's retreated. Most of the indicators have stayed about the same trend over time, with a few exceptions that I'll point out. Smoking and obesity, two things that you are all keenly aware of and interested in, uh, are high, above national averages and have kind of remained there in recent years. Uh, we can, using some very good, uh, estimates, external sources, National Institutes of Health, Ohio State University has some good stuff for us. We can dollarize the effects of how much extra spending on healthcare and workplace absenteeism is taking place or could be saved if these levels were reduced to the CDC national goals of twelve percent smoking and fifteen percent obesity. Not complete elimination, just reducing them to the national goals. What you wind up with is, uh, we estimate two hundred and seven million annually in incremental healthcare costs that could be eliminated by reaching those goals. Workplace absenteeism for people who work inside of this city, that's accounting for full and part-time adults in Oklahoma City, comes out to over three hundred million annually that's being cost, uh, Oklahoma City employers. So a lot of lost productivity via absenteeism. That's also readily dollarizable because people who are obese and people who smoke miss more days due to poor health. Uh, and smokers in particular take, uh, smoking breaks that cause them to miss time. Smoking particularly high in cluster three, alarmingly high in cluster three in the inner city. Obesity is highest, however, in cluster four, uh, up in the north, northeast and east region, uh, up at thirty-three percent in that cluster statistically significantly higher than anywhere else in the city. So while the smoking, uh, makes intuitive sense based upon the demography of the central region and what we know about that, with obesity, it doesn't necessarily follow, uh, the socioeconomic status. And this is a good example of that. Obesity is especially high in cluster four.
Can I ask you, is, does cluster four include Edmund or just?
I can tell you that, but not at this time because I don't know. Uh, it was based on zip codes.
But the, the map makes it look like it's, looks like it's almost a Guthrie.
Yeah, it could, it could be. That was, uh, one of our partners, uh, uh, here with the city actually produced that map for us. But it's based on zip codes that are limited to the city limits. OKC proper, not the broader metropolitan area. Okay? Okay, grocery store access, this is an important one. We didn't find much evidence of any kind of food deserts inside of the city. And that holds true across the city. Very good access to, uh, fresh produce, uh, reported by all clusters.
I, I, I don't think that's accurate. I, I'm sorry. I, looking through this, um, this report, this study, this summary, whatever you want to call it, clearly there are some things that I don't think are act, quite accurate.
Well, the, the, and these are just the opinions of randomly selected adults and we spoke to a thousand of them. So we, so that all of these things are, come with a error range of perhaps plus or minus three percent. In the case of access to grocery stores that sell fresh produce and healthy foods, you're up in the mid nineties across the city. And so these are very solid data, uh, with a very tight error range, very scientifically derived.
These, these aren't, these aren't accurate to geography, these are accurate to opinions of people. And they could be wrong, but, they could be wrong, but I, I guess what I'm saying is that they're asking them for their opinions. They're not going in and measuring.
See, the, the issue when it comes to polling, uh, many minorities, uh, when it comes to polling, there's always been a debate nationally and also local, um, for survey polls. Do they actually poll, uh, people within the minority community?
Right, right.
Um, because you hear a lot, uh, from individual within the, individuals within the underserved communities. I never received a call from Gallup poll or such and such, such and such. So, um, I have some strong reservations, uh, to the polling when it comes to underserved communities, not only in Oklahoma City, but across, uh, the country. This is something, again, that, uh, that national leaders have questioned. So this is not just John Pittis theology, um, but this is something that national leaders and national organizations have questioned over the years.
We, can I just say?
Sure.
There's a, we, this is a well-established problem that I don't think is that controversial. Even the city county health department acknowledges that there's an area on the northeast side with seventy-two thousand people that has one major grocery store. It's a landmass the size of Las Vegas.
Yeah.
Just giving you feedback that that's something that we've grappled with for years here and so.
Yeah, and it's, so that's fair enough. And I'm not saying that what these data are not suggesting is that this isn't something that ought not to be pursued by the city to rectify. What I'm, what I am saying is that when you take a random sample of a thousand residents of the city, they're not seeing it in the same perspective as you're seeing it. When we ask them if they have ready, if they have ready access to markets with fresh fruit and vegetables, the large majority answer the question, yes.
Do we have, uh, the list of individuals within northeast Oklahoma City, uh, central Oklahoma City that, that you all polled? Because I really am interested to see the sample. Um, I, I really am interested to see the sample.
Well, and that's what the, well, the, all of these surveys, of course, are done with, with the promise of confidentiality. Uh, so no, we, we won't hand over the, the names and phone numbers of the folks that we spoke with. But what we do do is we, here's, that's what the weighting is there for. Because what, what happens is, is that, that you take Census Bureau Statistics, so you know the demography of that particular community. And then you weight the data according to that, so that any groups that are underrepresented in the sample are counted more, so that they are counted the, the amount that they're supposed to be counted. That's how you account for what's called non-response bias.
And I perfectly understand that, but I'm just going to tell you right now, I don't buy those numbers.
Okay, okay. Well, I can't force you to buy them. Um, but, but what I'll do is I'll forge forward for, for those left up here that still do and, uh, share the rest of the results with you. Healthcare is important. Health insurance, dentistry and maintaining a personal doctor are all things that remain below national averages. Health insurance has trended down since two thousand and eight, seventy-seven percent report they've got it. That compares to about eighty-two percent nationally. Uh, food insecurity is also below national, or above national average, depending on how you look at it, inside of Oklahoma City, particularly in cluster three. One very good piece of news, I think, is city optimism. We do ask a question, do you think your city's getting better or worse as a place to live? Seventy percent of adults in Oklahoma City proper say yes, I think that it's getting better as a place to live. That's well ahead of the national average. If we look at that across a hundred and ninety cities nationwide in two thousand and twelve, that would put OKC in the top ten percent, top decile nationally. So there is a sense that things are moving in the right direction that prevails across all the clusters, least however in cluster three, the central one. The last one on this slide, opportunities to learn new and interesting things. Uh, that remains below national averages. I'm going to come back to that, uh, in just a couple of slides. Wellness Now, something that you all are interested in. One out of four have heard of it. Seven percent consider themselves to be very familiar with it. That's ten percent in cluster three, the central cluster. That's where familiarity is greatest with Wellness Now, which I think makes sense given where a lot of the efforts have been focused. When we, when we look at opinion regarding whether we think, uh, local government cares about the well-being of the citizens of the city, it's roughly split, about as many agree as disagree with that statement. But importantly, uh, close to two-thirds, uh, think that there's things the cities can actually do to improve well-being. That's compared to, uh, I think about twelve percent that do not. So there, there is a, a strong notion, a strong sense that things can be done and those, and that the city can play a leading role in doing so. So I'll wrap up with just a few comments and then I'll let you have your agenda back, Mr. Mayor. Smoking is obviously something that you guys are concerned about. Twenty-five percent in two thousand and eight smoked, twenty-five percent in two thousand and ten smoked, twenty-five percent today smoked, uh, according to our polling. So one out of four and that's been steady. That's well ahead of the national average, which is now at nineteen percent. So Setagola, twelve percent. I know that there are very clear legislative limitations to what you can all do from a policy-setting perspective around smoking cessation, but to the extent that, uh, you can continue to pursue this, it almost seems quaint to talk about it because smoking cessation's been around so long. It's an issue. It's a lot of sand tossing the gears inside of Oklahoma City. And I vigorously advise you to continue pursuing that from a branding, from an advertising, from a health literacy perspective as much as you possibly can. The next one is learning new and interesting things. That's one of the less intuitive ones. A very, very common feat. A very, very common feature of high well-being cities. This is an incredibly important psychological need that human beings have. It affects our productivity in the workplace. It affects how we think about and evaluate our lives and it thinks about how much we embrace and pursue and participate in wellness programs. People that learn and grow a lot frequently are more likely to be all of those things. So the more that Oklahoma City can leverage, we had a group got recognized this morning for supporting local artists, but anything that you can do to pull that out in your community, participating in the art fairs, getting the colleges involved, the lecture series, the museum access, all that stuff matters. Getting people to do more than watch the Thunder come back against Denver. Okay? It matters. This is stuff that these are common features of high well-being cities that's kind of untapped potential for Oklahoma City. The next one is the dentistry. Another less intuitive one that's really important, there of course are, forget about periodontal disease, there are many downstream negative health outcomes associated with poor oral health that affect your physical health and then by a close correlation affect your emotional health and affect the way you think about and evaluate your lives. So it makes a big difference. I know that OKC has done a lot of good work with the free clinics and the efforts to get people access to dentistry. The key is to make them think that it's important to go get their teeth done because people with good oral health reap a lot of physical and emotional rewards and they also evaluate their lives better and have higher well-being and that's a fact. That holds true regardless of demographics. Then just a couple of final points. The obesity is high up in Cluster 4. That's the north northeast and east and I can, we of course, we've already provided the exact zip codes that go into each of those clusters. But that's 33%. That's one out of three just through self-report height and weight. So it's no joke that's carrying around a lot of extra weight, a lot of extra healthcare costs and reduced productivity as a result of it. And then finally, one last thing that I just wanted to call out was prioritizing safe places to exercise in Cluster 3. Something else I know that you are all also keenly aware of, I think the Memorial Park renovations plays into that very nicely and can make quite a good difference. So full report is forthcoming, I'm out of time. I'm sorry sir that you don't buy it, but I think the data are useful and valuable and I encourage you to continue your well-being efforts. I think Oklahoma City is a really, really good, important bell cow for the rest of the nation, good example for the nation to follow. Thank you.
Dan, thank you very much.
Make a cautionary comment. The zip codes and city limits lines don't necessarily agree. We have citizens who live in Oklahoma City with Edmund mailing addresses because their zip code places them within Edmund postal area.
Yeah.
And so you have to be real careful when you say you matched up city limit bounds zip codes. They're not consistent at all.
Sure. Well, that, yes. City boundaries most certainly can cut through the middle of a zip code and we find that holds true for congressional districts for that matter.
Right.
And so what we, so we just take a winner-take-all policy. If most of the zip code is inside of the city boundaries, it's included. So there may be a smattering of respondents that are technically outside of the city limits, you're exactly right, that nevertheless would be included in our sample.
And more than likely that's how come you claim there's no food desert.
John, he didn't claim there was no food desert, he claimed the perception was that there was no food desert. You and I know there's a food desert.
Right, but what I'm saying is the perception probably came from those individuals.
It was 90%.
But I'd like to, I disagree with.
I'm fascinated by it, I'm not arguing it. I'm fascinated that people that live in a food desert don't recognize they live in a food desert.
And that's my point exactly.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions. On one of the pages you talked about that Oklahoma City is substantially behind the rest of the country in smoking cessation and ahead of the country in terms of obesity rates. And then you translate that to money. Do we have, is there any research that shows that Oklahoma City employees miss more time than say other cities that don't have the same obesity rates and smoking rates?
Yeah, yeah. We have, that's a great question. We have a self-report question embedded inside of the Well-being Index itself that asks about unhealthy days in the last month. And we know how that translates to actual missed workdays for respondents who work. Not all of our respondents are in the formal workplace, in the formal economy, obviously. For those who do, we can determine, we can compare the obese Oklahoma Cityans with the normal-weight Oklahoma Cityans and compare the days of missed work for this group based upon their own self-report with the days of work from this group with their self-report. Then it's just algebra. Then we can overlay NIH statistics on how much that's actually costing from a healthcare perspective and we can overlay some very good scholarly research on what it costs employers per day to have a person miss their work. So you can dollarize a factor, dollarize in that using a merger of the data that we asked our respondents here with external scholarly sources.
I'm not questioning that methodology at all. What I have a question is, do you have data from employers in cities that have much lower smoking rates and much lower obesity rates that show their employees have lower absentee rates?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm not saying how you can extrapolate it based on somebody says I smoke and I do this, I do that. But the real test would be if somebody that works at Boeing.
Right. Yeah, that's right. And that's where you have to get to employer data.
Right.
And so there's lots of case studies using actual employer data. Gallup, for example, has done that with our own employee population.
It's logical that you have higher absentee of people that live unhealthy lifestyles. I'm not challenging that. I just, I would prefer to see hard data rather than extrapolated.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. In the absence of being able to gather data from every employer in Oklahoma City and every employee of Oklahoma City, which is outside of our purview and outside of our realm, we have to rely on self-report. So we use just the large population statistics for sample, which is a good surrogate, which has been shown to be a good surrogate. But you're exactly right, it's just we're overlaying self-report because we don't have that kind of data. Yeah. Good question though.
The larger study will come when?
Well, the research is done, the report is being compiled. There is a much broader PowerPoint deck in existence than a written report that's being put together and that I think is going to be done within the next two weeks.
So one, I mean tobacco is an addiction. I'm wondering, did you look at other addiction in Oklahoma City? Because my perception is that it's overrunning the city of Oklahoma City. We're among the highest prescription opiate rates, not in the country but in the world. Two-thirds of every senior citizen presenting to an emergency room is now for drug and alcohol abuse.
Yeah.
Gambling, are you looking at emotional health? Are you looking at addiction other than tobacco?
Well, emotional health, sure, but things like substance abuse, that's not a part of the survey instrument at this time, other than smoking. Nicotine addiction is obviously the real deal. But when you talk about things like illegal drugs or illegal use of prescription drugs, those are not things that we ask inside of our survey instrument this time. It's not a part of the Well-being Index, it's not a part of what we asked here. So I can't shine light on that question, although I have no doubt that the problem's real.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd lobby you to include it.
Yeah, in fact we are, in fact we are. I can tell you this, this is an aside but a relevant one, that beginning January 2nd, 2014, the Well-being Index is being updated. That's the big national poll, 500 randomly selected adults every night, 175,000 a year. And among other questions that are being added are details on tobacco usage, alcohol use, prescription drug use. Now, we don't, we will not ask people, have you used illegal drugs yesterday? Because that doesn't work well in a survey research environment for obvious reasons. But we are expanding the floor of that cage a little bit to get at some of those other things that you're talking about. And those are data that'll be available for Oklahoma City too.
The total cost of the study was?
I don't know.
The city-county board of health went in with us. I don't remember the relationship or the dollar amount either, but we went, yeah. We approved it about.
It was 80,000 each, so it was 100, was it 230? Oh, that's right, 150, sorry. 150,000 each.
Each?
Yeah.
So 300,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
230, 115 each, sorry. I didn't, got the 50 and the 15.
Okay. Dan, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you all very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Appreciate Gallup's involvement. All right, we're back to items from Council. Pat, you want to get us started? All right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week I had the great opportunity to attend the National League City Conference. If you would, can you show the picture of our mayor please, photo corner? I just want to publicly say...
Did you take that picture?
Yeah, I took the picture. I just want to say that our mayor did an excellent job. He was one of the panelists for creating active transportation and infrastructure that promotes walking and biking. And that was actually my first time to see the mayor give a presentation like that. So I just wanted to say publicly, you did a great job. And coming from me, you know, you did a great job. To the next picture board, if you don't mind, thank you. That is a picture of me with the Secretary of, the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Anthony Fox. I had the great opportunity to thank him for the Tiger Grant and also talk to him about transportation concerns in Ward 7. Thank you, Board. On yesterday, the fire department along with the fire department, along with the Fire Union, the retired firefighters and several other organizations, they did a coat giveaway at Greystone Elementary School. And to see hundreds of disadvantaged kids receive new coats, that really touched my heart. And thank you to the fire department, the firefighters' union, and the Retired Firefighters Association for putting that event on. And on tonight, I will have a town hall meeting focusing on code enforcement beginning at 6:30 PM at Metro Tech Spring Lake Campus again tonight, beginning at 6:30 at Metro Tech Spring Lake Campus, beginning at 6:30 again. The emphasis will be on code enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, John. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll just be very brief. I just want to congratulate or thank actually the Oklahoma City Museum of Art for providing a magnificent piece of jewelry glass that's now out at the Oklahoma City Airport. It was unveiled on Friday, right in the middle of the concourse where people deplaning will see it and I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I hope you guys saw it when you came into the airport, it just looks wonderful. And I think it's a great way to get people thinking when they come into town about the multitude of art and educational opportunities that we have. So I'm a little surprised we didn't think about it sooner, but we thought about it now and so delighted it's there. And on Friday I also had an opportunity to attend a session out at the city-county health department facility on Complete Streets. And lots of our planning folks were there, it was really well-done, talking about city-wide opportunities to improve accessibility and walkability. And I thought there was a lot of good information, we have a lot of work to do, but a really good conversation. There were folks there from Edmund and so maybe we can improve some of our well-being scores in that regard. That was a great session. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week I had the honor and pleasure to attend and be one of the speakers and panelists at the Sustainable Disaster Recovery Conference at St. Louis University. And it was a very interesting two-day conference. I was not able to stay for both days, but very interesting and hope to be able to share some of those ideas and insight at a much smaller conference that, or seminars that we could have here in Oklahoma City, maybe beginning in January. But you know, the state of Oklahoma was greatly supported at that conference. We heard representatives from Colorado talk about flooding that took place just a couple of months ago up there, to earthquakes out in California, to hurricanes in New York and New Jersey. About this time last year, when the first conference was held, Hurricane Sandy was coming through the East Coast. And then last week, you know, the tsunami out in the Philippines was occurring. And so you get a lot of great information as to how to prepare for these and then with respect to the recovery side, how to build a more storm-resilient type of home or commercial building. A lot of effort was put in that regard and again, those are the ideas that we hope to bring back here to Oklahoma City. And then also, last week, I had the pleasure to speak with the members of the Oklahoma City Firefighters Union and they're supportive of our ordinance with respect to the abandoned buildings, you know, that $6 million annual cost that the city incurs, some of that is attributable to firefighters having to respond to those abandoned buildings, just like I'm sure our police department is supportive of our efforts to reduce and eliminate those abandoned buildings. Finally, in speaking with those firefighters, they did bring up an issue that I thought, you know, is, needs at least to be explored. And they talked about with respect to the new contract with IMSA, delaying the response time, you know, they just have a concern that they, you know, we need to monitor this, I believe, that that doesn't result in fewer ambulances out on the street to allow them to have that lower cost of this most recent contract. Because when there's fewer ambulances, we, it doesn't mean that the calls are dropping. And so when there's fewer ambulances to respond, if an ambulance can't respond to a call, the firefighters have to. And we were trying to, you know, through the enhanced 911 call, reduce the times firefighters are having to respond to non-emergency type calls. And so if IMSA's reducing the number of ambulances, I'm not saying they are, but if they do, then that just is going to increase the number of calls that firefighters have to respond to. And the problem with that, when they respond to non-high emergency type calls, is once they respond to a call, they have to stay at the location until the issue is resolved, even if a more, a higher level of emergency type call may come in. So anyway, just something that I think we need to monitor. Thank you.
I wanted to mention also the passing of Don Bound that took place this week. Don was a city manager for the city of Oklahoma City for many years and I've asked staff to put together a council resolution that we can review going forward. Pete?
A couple of things. One is I felt like the discussion we had today with regard to the Laptade Building was a very positive one. I think that's what democracy done out loud is, and Meg made that comment, we were both refilling our tea glasses and she made the comment that, and I think it's true, that a lot of multiple sides of those issues were brought to the table and I feel like that's how we ought to do things. I was very pleased with it. Second thing is, I noticed, I got some kind of press release that somebody was going to do a term limit initiative petition. And while I'm certainly not the poster child for the opposition to term limits, or maybe I am the poster child for term limits, one of the things that was brought out in that process was that the ease with which something can be placed on the ballot. And that is that at this time, until there's another citywide election, it takes just a very few signatures in excess of 6,000 to get a matter on the ballot. That probably won't happen again. It probably won't ever be that low. And I've been an advocate for a long time of going to 10 wards and I am seriously considering personally initiating an initiative petition to put it on the ballot at the first possible date to read District of City into 10 wards. That could be avoided if there are enough of us that would like to see us do it because we can do it by vote at the council, it does not have to be a charter change. But the more I look into the 10-ward things and the more I look at the population growth of Oklahoma City and the size of the wards, both geographically and population, it just seems to me that there are whole communities that are not served very well. seems to me that there are whole communities that are not served very well, I don't think. And that's a direct result of the size of the wards and the population of the wards. And so I'm very seriously, and I didn't want you to hear it anyplace else, but here, I haven't talked about it publicly anywhere, but I'm very serious about the possibility of initiating of initiative petition to put that on the ballot at the next possible date.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I didn't bring pictures from Ardmore, unfortunately, John, so I can't compete with that. But our mayor did do an excellent job articulating the vision for the city and the direction it was going. And it was very enthusiastically embraced by the Chamber of Commerce members who were in attendance. Two of the key issues that were discussed at the convention meeting, the retreat meeting, education got a lot of attention. Dave Lopez gave an excellent presentation on what he's endeavoring to do, complimented the city. And Pat Ryan and Pete White for their involvement on the initiative to improve the quality of education in I-89. They also spent, had an excellent presentation on the transportation system for Oklahoma City in the future, going out to 2035. Presented the fixed guideway study, also discussed in great detail how the downtown circulator route, the modern streetcar fits into the overall transportation, how high-speed rail, commuter rail, bus rapid transit, all were pieces in the future transportation needs for, and the cry went out really for greater involvement of Oklahoma City with the other suburban areas to come up with a comprehensive and actually start to implement some of these strategies. And then also had the privilege, and I'll let Councilman Griner, if he wants to expand on it, attend the groundbreaking of the West Trail, which is the first trail in the MAPS III that actually has had groundbreaking done on it. Construction will start, and it will connect from the southern portion of Lake Overholser eventually to Southwest 15th and Meridian, a very exciting West Trail connection. And so that groundbreaking was held last week. Thank you, Your Honor.
So along the lines of what Larry's talking about, about transportation, communicating with our surrounding municipalities, there's a very important meeting tomorrow at the ACOG offices at 21 East Main from 4:30 to 6:30, in which there'll be a public meeting about how to connect, you know, potential routes connecting transit from Oklahoma City to Edmond, Moore, Norman, out to Tinker Air Force Base, and what routes are being considered. And really, public involvement in that process is key and will make it a much better process. So again, that's 4:30 to 6:30, and the presentation will be at 5:00 p.m., 21 East Main. I wanted to, I was very encouraged, I wanted to talk about this convention, sports and leisure convention center study. Let me just, for clarification, Jim, can I ask, the presentation of the convention center hotel studies is going to be on December 17th?
Yes.
Both studies?
The feasibility study, or the market study and the-
Economic impact.
Yes.
And will we have those before the meeting, or?
Well, I assume we'll follow our standard process.
Would we be able to see them before the December 17th meeting, or we would see them for the first time here?
I don't know, Councilman, I haven't had any discussions in that area. Generally, we put them out in the packet on the Friday afternoon before.
Okay.
So I-
Okay. Well, I was very encouraged here, talking to Roy Williams this morning about, that he would consider, you know, the release of that study. And I guess I'd just like to formally ask that we, that we ask him to ask his board if that's something they would consider to release that study. I think, you know, when I talk to people privately, I do think there is this divide between the, not whether to do a convention center, I think we're all, we're all moving forward with that. The question is the programming and what is the goal of the convention center and the whole program? Is it technologically savvy, focusing on local, state, regional conventions? Or is it a sense of trying to compete for national conventions? And I don't think there's clear consensus on that. And I think that that study that was done mostly in 2008, released in 2009, has important information for the public to ponder this. And for us, I don't know who's read the study and who hasn't. You can go to the chamber, and they'll let you read it in a private room. But it has, it has important information. There's been about at least more than 20 convention, sports and leisure studies in other cities since that time, all of which are available. They're online. They look to me to be very similar or identical to the study that was done that we had, even Tulsa did one, Tucson, San Antonio, Provo, Milwaukee, downtown Miami, Lexington, Kansas City, Detroit, Boise, Bismarck, Los Angeles, Miami Beach, all in the last couple of years by the same consultant we had, convention, sports and leisure. It's all, you know, available and has important information. I'll give you an example. One thing they do in these studies is they survey event planners. And they ask event planners, would you, you know, where would you rank this city if they were to get a new convention center or a new hotel? And in ours, and we have an executive, we're the only city that I can find in America that's released an executive summary but hasn't released the report. In our executive summary, it says that we rank in the bottom third on those surveys. Well, if you go look at the other convention, sports and leisure studies that are done in these other cities, they publish where Oklahoma City ranks. Milwaukee, for example, had Oklahoma City dead last. Louisville, I think we were third from the bottom. So it's one thing to say that you're in the bottom third. It's another thing entirely for you to rank dead last among event planners that are saying, even if you built an entirely new facility, you'd still be, you'd rank dead last in terms of where we would put a national convention. And I think that's, I think that's critical information. And I would just really hope that you could negotiate with their, formally ask them to release that for us as we move, and I presume in the next month, make this very important decision. There's also information in the study about what would be required in terms of a convention and visitors bureau budget, what this body would have to do to enhance the budget to perform at the level that's being promoted in that study. And we haven't really ever talked about that publicly. And I think that would be very useful. There are other things in the study. A lot of it is outdated now. A lot of the concerns, some of the shortcomings of our convention business are outdated, it's five years old. For example, you know, the lack of sidewalks or the lack of public transit. Well, now there's a streetcar coming online. So it's a different, it's a different animal than it was in 2008.
I want to set the expectation clear on the 17th. We're going to present the economic, or the market study and the economic impact of it. And then I would anticipate that there will be an action item to go forward and do a feasibility study. Then we brought it to council last summer. We had a feasibility study, a market study and feasibility study, and council said, well, there's no reason to do the feasibility study if there's no market. So do the market study first.
Right.
And so we're doing the market study, and that'll be presented along with economic impact of that. And I'm anticipating that the next step would then be to do a feasibility study.
On the 17th?
Well, yeah, I think it'll probably be the recommendation that comes out on the 17th. I don't know. I don't know. It's a month out. We haven't worked everything out on it, whether that's a recommendation that's in the packet or not. But at some, some point shortly thereafter, I would anticipate we'd want to go, if the market supports it, to see how, what it would cost and how it would be, could be put together.
But there would be a cost to a feasibility study. It would require a policy decision by the body that we wanted to move forward.
Yes, absolutely.
To have those two studies released to us on Friday, presumably, or the day of, and then decide that day whether to move forward.
I'm not trying to put the fast track there, push it through, or make a fast decision on the council.
No, it's definitely not being fast track. That's clear. But, okay. Well, having this study over the next month to go over, both for myself and with constituents, I think would be very helpful to the process, which we are an outlier. We're an outlier in terms of transparency. We're the only city in America that's doing this way. And so to kind of go the extra step in terms of transparency and getting this information out to the public, and let, because over the last four years, they haven't seen it. And we haven't had to be able to have these public discussions. And so I think, I think it's critical. I think that we talked two weeks ago about having Mr. Sanders come. He's indicated that he's willing to on the 17th. And so I just want to confirm again that that's, that's okay with this body to, there were a couple who weren't here. Mr. Haywood Sanders is a convention center economic expert that's kind of watched the proceedings in Oklahoma City. And we talked about having him come and just talk about convention center economics, since we're going to be hearing about economic impacts of these and making an important decision, maybe just hearing from this nationally-recognized expert who's testified in front of Congress twice, testified in dozens and dozens and dozens of cities, city councils, and who indicated that he'd be willing to meet with city councilors individually and as a body here at the time of the presentation of those studies. Is that-
Has he done work for, I mean, has, have we engaged him to do work for us?
No. He's just, he's willing to come and talk to us individually, talk to the body.
To what effect?
To talk about the current convention center economics, to talk about the current market conditions of convention center hotels.
Globally, or?
In the United States.
Okay. I mean, he hasn't done work for us, so he's not going to be specifically talking about how it relates to Oklahoma City.
Well, he would be talking about the Oklahoma City, yes. He has not, he has not been engaged by the City of Oklahoma City. But many of the principles he would be talking about apply to every city. Many of the way these studies are done and the methodology of these studies are done, you know, throughout the country, the city.
So I, obviously, I wasn't here last week, but I'm just curious why, how did we select this guy? Presumably, there are lots of folks that do convention studies, and we've engaged some to help us. So why are we reaching out to somebody that we haven't engaged?
Well, when we asked the same questions about why OCU was selected to do an economic impact analysis by the Alliance for Economic Development, apparently without the knowledge of the council, to be presented on December 17th, I didn't really understand the, why OCU was selected. They don't appear to have any previous history of doing convention center hotel economic impact analyses. So that was just kind of, that was just learned. And so I asked if we could have maybe a different opinion, a different analysis of the economic impact of these hotels in cities. Is there any objection to him coming and meeting with us individually and speaking on December 17th?
Well, as far as meeting individually, I guess that'd just be up to each council member.
Right.
And then as far as, I don't know the correct answer. It's, you know, we always welcome anybody who wants to address the council to be able to do that. The only limitation just may be on the timing. I don't know how long his presentation-
Give it three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Give it three minutes.
Well, no, maybe we could go beyond the three minute, but I'm just saying, it may, well, we're not going to decide that today. We'll wait until the mayor comes back and make that decision.
I think it's, I think it's critical to be maximally transparent. And I'll just share with you my, I mean, I think we are an outlier on the original study. When I first came on council, I was, it was explained to me, you know, it was kind of baptism by fire. We had the Alliance for Economic Development coming online my very first meeting. It was explained that one reason that it was important to have a vehicle like that was that if we had, we could have studies like for the convention center hotel, that if the results were adverse, wouldn't necessarily be shared with the public. That, that, along with journalists at the Oklahoma, and kind of explaining to me how studies, how stories on the convention center were not allowed to be published by their editors, all this kind of hit at the beginning. And it does, that anecdotal experience does, does tailor my opinions. But even besides that, my own anecdotal experience, I think it's just, we are an outlier in terms of transparency. I think it's very important to get as much information out to the public as we prepare for this very important decision. Thanks.
Thank you. James?
The groundbreaking for the trail was a, that is an exciting, exciting project. It's connecting, you know, whenever it's done, you'll be able to ride your bike from Lake Hefner all the way down to the Oklahoma River. And that's a really cool aspect to the, to the whole trail system. And then about Pete's 10, 10 council or 10 ward idea, I think that's a good idea. I think we should, at the very least, discuss it at some point. So, but I think in principle, I think it's a good idea with the way that the city's grown over the, over the years. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. City manager report.
Couple more presentations this morning. Mike Carrier is here to give us an update on the first quarter CVB report.
Good morning. Yeah, it's still morning. Good morning, Council. Mike Carrier, President of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Pleased to be here with you to share with you some information about our first quarter of our fiscal year. As is typical in our industry, the first quarter is usually a little bit slow. There are not a lot of decisions that get made by convention groups seemingly in the months of July and August. September begins to pick up a little bit. We are a little bit behind at the end of the first quarter where we were last year. But I'm pleased to tell you that the month of October has been a good month already, and I'll speak to that more when I give you our second quarter report next February. Interest continues to grow in Oklahoma City in terms of what we're seeing, in terms of people that are looking at this as a future site. We've had 14 site visits during the first quarter, which is an increase over the last two years. The last two years, we had a total of 45 site visits last year and 43 the prior year for the year. We're at 31% of that 45 already, just in the first quarter, and activity typically picks up as we move through the year. It's interesting to note that one of the groups that visited us just a couple of weeks ago is a group that is planning on holding their 2020 meeting here in Oklahoma City, a national convention that we would be delighted to have here in Oklahoma City. And it will be, they have already made their decision to come to Oklahoma City. So we'll be looking at that in future years as they move to contract, once we have something, something in the ground with the new convention center. The group tour market continues to be strong, motor coaches. Again, this particular time of year is not as strong, or the summer months are not as strong as some other months are. But what we have seen is tremendous interest in the future for Oklahoma City. We attend a number of different shows each year. Many of those are appointment shows. You go in with designated appointments with tour operators. Every show we've been to so far, we've had full appointment books. You can only have a certain number of appointments while you're there. And better than half of the people that we meet with are requesting to see us. I can tell you that in 2007, when I came here, we just hoped that somebody would ask to see us. Now, over half of the people that we're visiting with are asking to see us and talk with us about Oklahoma City as a destination. The equine industry, we've had a very good late summer and early fall, solid numbers with our horse shows this year, or this week, rather. We're in the second week of the Quarter Horse World Championships. We follow that with the National Reigning Horse Futurity. NRHA, which is headquartered here in Oklahoma City, made an announcement yesterday, sent out a press release. They have hired a new senior staff member, the head of their organization. They've changed the title to Commissioner. This gentleman will be joining them January 1st. We're excited to see that move on their part, and they are excited to have him coming in. In terms of marketing, we are working on a new advertising program. We've been using the current program for five years now. Oklahoma City is not the same today as it was five years ago when we put this program in place. And so we're spending this calendar year doing research. We are doing focus groups at a number of the major association marketplaces. We did one at the American Society of Association Executives Annual Meeting in Atlanta. We did another one a couple of weeks ago in Salt Lake City. We were there for a program called Teams. It's a sports convention program. We brought meeting planners together with our research folks, and they had an opportunity to ask questions and talk about Oklahoma City, their perceptions of us, basically looking to see how much we've moved the needle since, since we started the program that we're on now five years ago. Our internet traffic is up 37% over the first quarter last year. You know, we're very pleased with the inquiries we're getting for primarily leisure travel, people that are interested in coming to Oklahoma City. And we continue to see that in very good situation. One of the things that we are doing in- One of the things that we are doing in preparation for the marketing program that we'll develop out of this research that's going on and beginning to market the new convention center is made a change in our staff, and the change that we made is we brought on a new lead salesperson in our convention and sports sales area, and elevated that to a vice president's position, which is pretty much the standard in our industry, particularly as we look to move forward in what we're going to be doing over the next few years. Dennis Johnston is with me today, and I just wanted to introduce Dennis to you. Dennis comes to us from Lexington, Kentucky. He's been the vice president of sales at the Lexington Bureau for the last eight years. Prior to that, he has more than a 25-year career in the hotel industry, having served as the director of marketing during the construction and opening and, subject to that, the, the operation of the Indianapolis Marriott in downtown Indianapolis. There are some of you here, I think, that were on an inner-city visit not too many years ago to Indianapolis, and I'm not sure if you stayed in that hotel or not, but Dennis certainly has excellent experience, also experienced as director of national accounts at the Orlando World Marriott. So, strong, strong background, certainly understands the industry, knows very well the potential that we have and what it will take to bring the kinds of meetings in here that we fully intend to bring in and are planning for with the new convention center. You may have also seen in, I believe it was yesterday's paper, the report that the, the state released on domestic spending on travel. This is the U.S. Travel Administration. They do a report every year. The state buys this research every other year, and so the last time we had this was in 11, in 11, 12, this is for, or 10, 11, rather, and this is 12 and 13. And for the year 2012, domestic spending on tourism and travel in Oklahoma was $7.2 billion. That, when I say domestic spending, that's travel from people within the United States. That doesn't include the international travel that we see coming in here, particularly for our horse shows. And right now, there's a strong contingent of internationals at the Quarter Horse Show. Next week, there will be an even stronger contingent for the Reigning Horse Show, and I would suggest that you come out there particularly on Friday night, the 6th, or, I'm sorry, Thursday night, the 5th, for the shootout, which will be predominantly internationals, and you probably won't understand anybody in the Noric Arena from all the countries that will be represented there, European as well as South American, and certainly Canada, the U.S., and Mexico, but a tremendous number of folks that will be here for that. The domestic travel spending, and it's interesting to note that Oklahoma County, of the $7.2 billion, Oklahoma County produced $2.5 billion of that. We produced more in Oklahoma County than the next four counties combined. I won't list those counties because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but the guys up the turnpike finished second, and when you add them with the other three counties below them, we still had more revenue coming into Oklahoma City. We also have the strongest payroll and the strongest employment, and it's, it's great to see that because we're at 2.5. The last report, we were at 2.1. So our tourism industry continues to grow and continues to flourish. Our hotel occupancy here, as you have seen from the hotel tax collections, continues to be very strong. I spoke to someone with one of the downtown hotels yesterday, asked them about their occupancy, and their comment was, if you need a room on Sunday night, I can help you. Other than that, you know, we'll probably suggest you should look somewhere else. So we're, we're doing very, very well. We appreciate the support that you folks provide for us, and the last thing that I want to say to you is, if you did not see it, there was an announcement made two weeks ago, when I said that we were at the TEAMS conference, they do a, an awards program based on sports travel, and it's a national voting. The award for the best collegiate event or series in the country for last year was awarded to the NCAA for the Women's College World Series. We beat out the men's Division One basketball tournament and the men's baseball World Series. Pretty good, and certainly, I think, provides affirmation to the city's continued involvement in upgrading our softball facility so that we can, with a little bit of good fortune and the work that's being done out there, garner a long-term contract with the NCAA to continue to be the host for the World Series. So, things are going well. We appreciate your support and look forward to continuing to see the trends move the way they are.
Quick question on softball. That's in Ward 7, correct?
That's what?
That's in Ward 7, correct?
Yes, sir. That is in Ward 7.
I just want to make sure.
Excellent facility, one of several in the Adventure District that is in Ward 7.
And in what category did it rank above those? Like, what was the criteria?
Well, it-
You said it ranked above them, but I can't-
It was, it was a national vote.
Oh, okay, just that experience?
Yeah, people that, experience and people that have seen the series, you know, people that are, for whatever reason, they vote for something of that nature. We beat out, I think it's pretty good when you beat out the men's final four.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mike, it's been suggested today that Oklahoma City would be ranked dead last in site selectors' choice of places to bring their conventions. Is that what you're actually seeing out in the marketplace?
Yeah, it, it depends on who you ask and what you ask them. We're, we're getting a lot of interest. At the beginning of this fiscal year, we had in excess of 100,000 rooms of tentative business that we were pursuing. Those were people that had identified, room nights of, of business. Those are people that had identified Oklahoma City as a place they wanted to seriously consider for their convention. We've added an under, we've, some of that has booked, some of it has been lost, and I don't have the exact numbers, but we've added 89,000 new tentative rooms in the first three quarters of this year. So, our goal, and I've said it before, you know, we're not trying to be Boston or Denver or some of these other larger cities in the country. We're trying to be the best Oklahoma City we can be, and we're looking forward to a convention center that meets our needs. We will, we will be a very strong competitor in the regional market, but we'll also be a competitor in the national market. There are thousands of conventions that are held every year. There are hundreds and even thousands of national conventions held every year. They don't all go to Atlanta, or Washington, or Chicago, or Boston. You know, they go to second-tier cities for a lot of different reasons, including that they want to be the big fish in the pond. They don't want to have to compete with larger conventions for goods and services and attention while they're there. The convention I talked about for 2020 is the National Association of Free Will Baptists. Last time I checked, their money was green. You know, and it doesn't matter whether it's religious or medical, or, it doesn't matter. They're coming here to spend money and to hold their convention, and so, you know, those are the kinds of things that, that we're going after, and that's what we need, the quality and size of facility to be able to handle. You know, I can, I can give you all kinds of numbers about conventions that need, you know, 400,000, 500,000, 600,000 square feet of exhibit space. That's not what we're looking for in Oklahoma City. We're looking for a quality facility that will allow us, you know, and that's what the plan is, is to give us a quality facility to be able to attract these meetings to come to Oklahoma City. And so, no, we're, we're not at the bottom of the list for the people that we are, are pursuing.
Thank you.
Mike, final comment. I keep hearing optimistic reports about funding for the completion of the Native American Cultural Center. That would have a positive impact, wouldn't it, on both the leisure travel as well as the convention business in Oklahoma City?
I definitely believe that it would. National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum is a unique facility. The American Indian Cultural Center would also be a unique facility in the nation. They would complement each other very nicely, and the fact that so many people come here looking for a true native western experience, let's tell the whole story, and we're on the way to doing that, and so hopefully, the funding will be in place, and we will be able to move forward with the, with the completion of that.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for your-
Quick question. That's in Ward 7, right?
I think so. I'm not exactly sure where the boundaries are on the southern side of the line, Councilman, but I think that's in Ward 7.
Councilman Pettis, that may be a good reason why we do look at Councilman White's proposal to redistrict. We need to break some of those things up a little bit.
Object.
Thank you.
We do have a presentation to highlight the items of Downtown in December, and Jill Delosier is with us this morning.
I'm Jill Delosier with Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, and I'm going to tell you about Downtown in December this year. We have more than 20 events that will be happening in the downtown area around the holidays, and the Devon Ice Rink will be open starting tomorrow, and it's open seven days a week, and it's $10 to get in, and all of the information you can find on the Myriad Gardens website or downtownindecember.com. Devon Saturdays with Santa is back for its third year, and it will be in the Devon Rotunda every Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's free and open to the public, and it's been hugely popular. So, Santa will be there every week, of course, and they're bringing live reindeer one week, and there's crafts and all kinds of fun stuff. Chesapeake Snow Tubing is back again, and they're having the inspection as we speak on this slide, so that will be opening this Friday, and it's open weekends only until school gets out, and then it'll be open daily after that, and it's also $10. And you can buy tickets there at the Red Hawk Stadium, or you can get them online at The Tree Lighting Festival presented by Sandridge is the day after Thanksgiving, and it's a little bit earlier. We adjusted for a Thunder game, so it's going to start at 5:00 on Friday, the 29th, and the mayor will be there to light the tree, and we'll have live music, and again, it's free and open to the public, and there'll be face painting for kids and free popcorn and cookies from Nonna's. The Sandridge Santa Run is a 5K and one-mile race, and we also have a free kids' dash, and that is happening December 14th. It starts at Leadership Square, and that will raise money for North Care this year. Free Water Taxi Rides are one of our most popular events that we do for Downtown in December, and that's made possible from a sponsorship through the Business Improvement District, and it's every Thursday through Sunday, starting the day after Thanksgiving, so all season long, and we're adding some live music this year and some other activities, so while they're waiting in the giant line for the free water taxis, they'll be entertained. There are multiple light displays that we are promoting through Downtown in December, and automobile alley lights on Broadway are back again this year, and they're already up and should be turned on within the next couple of days. And One Main Financial is sponsoring the Bricktown Canal Lights, and those are installed and ready to turn on during the Tree Lighting Festival. Deluxe Winter Market is a new event. We did a winter market last year, and this year, we decided to partner with Deluxe. It was formerly at the Fairgrounds, so we brought them downtown, and everything that's going to be at the show is local artists, and everything's handmade, and it's the weekend after Thanksgiving, that Saturday and Sunday, at the Chevy Bricktown Events Center, and you can see the full list of everybody who's going to be there on the website. Sonic Segway Santa is coming back again, and this year, he's giving out gift cards from Sonic America's Drive-In, and of course, he passes out mints and takes pictures with everybody, so you'll see him cruising around on his Segway throughout the season, and we're going to tweet from Downtown OKC, Inc., so you can find him when he's out and about. This was a new event that we added last year, and we had to bring it back because it was crazy popular. In fact, our first movie is already sold out, but Continental Resources presents Free Movie Mondays every Monday in December, and we have a theater reserved at Harkins, and we just opened it up free to the public, but you do have to reserve online how many tickets you like, and so we opened it up yesterday, and it sold out in one day. So, each, each movie will open up two weeks prior to the showing date online, and that's downtownindecember.com again. Little Willie's Triple Dog Dare is a stair climbing event that happens inside Oklahoma Tower, Leadership Square North, and Leadership Square South, and it's an athletic event, and that is on December 7th. Santa's Adventures on the Oklahoma River are also part of Downtown in December this year, and it's opening right after Thanksgiving, and will go all the way to January 5th, and it's really fun. The prices are for an all-day pass, so you can bring the kids out there, and they have a candy cane rock climbing wall and a fun zip line. I took my little kids out there last year, and they had a blast. Holiday pop-up shops are going to be in Midtown this year. There are three different shopping events, so I wanted to clarify that the Myriad Gardens will also have winter shops, and these shops are in Midtown, and then our Deluxe Winter Market is at the Chevy Center. So there's plenty of holiday shopping downtown this year, and these shops are going to be produced by Alison Barta Bailey, and she's got local stores that are opening up ancillary locations there. And these are some of the holiday events that are taking place inside the Myriad Gardens. Like I just mentioned, they're having winter shops there, and those are going to be open every single day of the holiday season, not just weekends, so you can go out there on your lunch break or any time during the day or the evening, and they're going to light up the Crystal Bridge and do different holiday displays around the gardens. And we have a couple of other Downtown in December events, and we're going to be putting some lights and decor along Film Row this year, which is brand-new, and Free Museum Sundays are back for December 8th. The Nutcracker and the Christmas Show and a Christmas Carol and Opening Night are all part of the festivities as well. That's all I have, so thank you guys so much, and we hope to see you out there. Thanks.
Great, great activities for the holidays. It's, it's exciting for me to see how it's grown year after year after year, and, you know, a part of a great city is a great town, and a great town has, has great activities for everybody. If you can't find some, something in there that's good for you and your family, I don't think you're trying very hard, because they've done an excellent job, and they just keep expanding it every year, so thank you, Jill. And that's all I have under City Manager Reports. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Now, citizens to be heard. First, Mrs. Cathal? How close was I?
Was, okay.
Okay.
I want to pass it off to yourself first.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay.
Okay. And we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Taletha Cottle. I live at 121 Southwest 66th Street. I'm a student at the University of Central Oklahoma. I'm a, I'm majoring in organizational communications and minoring in leadership, and in my leadership class this semester, it's called Leadership and Civic Engagement. Dr. Mary Carver asked us to choose a civic project that we could do this semester and, like, an issue within our community and try to fix it, and then we report to the class what, what was the outcome. So, I chose the issue of dead animal pickup, and the reason why I chose that issue is in times past, I would call, and I would notice, like, weeks would go by and this animal would still not be picked up. So I thought, well, and I'd call back, and they would say, well, we only have one part-time employee picking up for the entire city, and it takes some time. And I thought, one part-time employee for one of the largest geographical cities in the United States, I've got to do something about this. So, I itemized out some issues, and I talked to the right city people who really, almost all of my issues have been fixed already, so it was a wonderful experience. I'm just going to briefly tell you what the issue was and what the outcome was with the city employee that I talked to. So the first issue was about them not picking up fast enough, and I met with Catherine English, Superintendent of Animal Welfare, who explained to me very well in detail all the processes, all the issues, and coincidentally, for about the past six months, they've been trying to get additional funding to hire an additional person for the dead animal pickup. She, I left after meeting with her. A couple days later, she called me, and they have been approved to hire another- A couple days later, she called me, and they have been approved to hire another person. So I would like to take credit for that, but it was really coincidental. The second issue was the confusion in animal welfare on what authority picks up where. So I thought that when I called the dead animal pickup, that I was calling animal welfare. Actually, I'm calling the 911 Center, where, even though it's a non-emergency number, but there's specified people in that center that handle animal welfare calls. So I met with David Shoup, he's the Director of 911 Communications, and he said that, basically, depending on where the animal is, a different department, like OHP, ODOT, they would be picking up there. And previously, that burden was on the citizen to call that place to get that animal picked up. And I thought, that's not really that good, that the burden is on me, because I feel like I'm calling, it's in the city limits, and it just causes confusion. So he said, they are going to implement a standard operating procedure that will have to go through their levels of approval, to where, when a citizen calls, that call will be transferred to the right agency, if it's not the animal welfare department in Oklahoma City. So even if someone calls, and it happens to be the dead animals in Yukon, that employee at the 911 Communication Center will simply transfer that citizen to that city, or OHP, or ODOT. So he said that he doesn't see any reason why it wouldn't be approved, but there's still a process they have to go to, to implement something like that. The next issue is that there's little to no public awareness of what action can be taken. So I noticed in my class, a lot of people didn't even know you could call to report when you saw a dead animal, and a lot of friends and family, I would tell. So a lot of people don't even know that you can do that. I was directed to talk to Kristy Jaeger, Public Information Director. When I called her to set up a meeting to meet with her, and we discussed it over the phone, she actually was like, I didn't realize that there's nothing on the city website about where you can call. I will get that fixed. And within five days, she gave me all the places, which I've detailed in the handout I gave you, on the city's website where that's at now. It's also going to be in the December newsletter that comes in the utility bill to every customer. It's just like two sentences, saying, if you notice a dead animal, you can call this number. So that got fixed. And the last issue was, I'd like for city employees who work in the field, if they see it when they're out doing their job, that they could report it. Not really sure how that could be implemented, but it was just another idea. So I want to thank the people who helped me through this process. Catherine English, she met with me, listened, very nice person, very knowledgeable, gave me a tour of the animal shelter. David Shoup, again, listened to me, very warm and welcoming. He solved my issue. And had Dorothy Dunn, which is the supervisor there, give me a tour of the 911 Communication Center. Kristy Jaeger instantly helped me. She was awesome, very knowledgeable, energetic, she's a very good person. And my Councilman Pete White, I met with him about this process, and he gave me guidance on how to present at the Citizens to Be Heard meeting. And Mr. Bob Teener, since this is his department that this was about, he was just generally interested in what I was talking to all these people about, so I met with him. And I think that it was a very good process. I learned way more than just about dead animal pickup. I learned about the city, budgets, processes, this coming in here, it was absolutely awesome. And I just thought it was great that I had people that were eager to help and willing to listen. And I recommend any citizen, if they have an issue, it can be solved. I mean, you just have to learn the, be educated on all aspects of the issue, because there's a lot of things I did not realize until I started talking to people. So that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Talitha, thank you. And please let your professor know, we recommend that you get an A for both the project and the class, and see how much influence that has.
I'll have her watch this online. Thank you.
Yes, A+. Yes, excuse me. Okay, thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Well, everybody knows I'm Joe Sars Nelson. I am here specifically on one thing. I would like to clear the air on a few issues, so you don't want to think completely bad of me. I've liked Oklahoma City, if I can, loved Oklahoma City since I really got a hold of it, and it's been 65 years. I respect everybody up here on that bench, including you, Mr. Pettis, whether you believe it or not. In fact, if you recall, when you were sworn in, I stood right over here and shook your hand, and told you, and excuse the way I put this, ladies, I said, I was damn glad to see some of you young people taking serious the city issues in hand. And another thing, some of your constituents up here will also be glad to tell you that once you take that office, you take the BS along with the good, because it's going to come. I've been there, and I've done that. I've carried a badge in my time. I've been a deputy sheriff. I worked with U.S. Marshals, some close friends of mine, private investigator for 56 years. I am a retired Navy SEAL, the smallest man on Navy history. I served in Vietnam, and one of the local men with the police department, Ed Begley, and I served in Vietnam. He lost his legs, and I cut around in the back. And that's the end of that story. I'm here for one reason, and now I'm going to bite the bullet with you, okay? First off, two weeks ago, I left this room, and I got a phone call about an hour later, that a young man named Mr. Pettis came up here, spoke a few choice words about me. That's all right, I admire that, I really do. And that's probably him sitting back there behind me, and I like that, too. But I've got young boys of my own, and I can tell them, once you get 21, you're on your own. I'll protect you from getting physically hurt, but you go out and shoot your mouth off, that's all, you're on your own. But I still hold, was what I said that day, when Mr. Cornet picked you out, after all these people were in this room, and your people from Ward Seven come over and spoke so negative about the streetcar, so to speak, they weren't ready for it. Oklahoma City's not ready for that streetcar. It don't go anywhere. And the little lion session that went up here between Mr. Jeff and the man over here, number two seat, that was a joke. And he sat right behind me and heard every word I said, not one remark. When I walked out of this room, he walked right past me, didn't say nothing to me. Now, I know there's people in this city government, and I spent four and a half years with an investigation going on in City Hall. I will not lie about that. And I told that, you were here, I think Mr. McAtee was here then, and a few others. And I've got six investigators that did work for me. I've run out of money now. I spent all my dad's legacy to me to find out. And I took the three parts of the story back then, that I had certain evidences, things I was going to bring normal. And I do intend to do that. Only reason I even got in this quest is because Mr. Kirk Humphries made me mad. I'm mad to this day, and he knows I'm mad. We stood right out here in this little room down here, and one of his offices was downstairs on the second floor, and the man got face-to-face with me in this City Hall, because I told him, I said, why don't you resign? You're about the worst piece of mayor trash I've ever seen. Because I had some evidence that I didn't like. And he wouldn't address the issue with me. He got nose-to-nose and threatened me. I left the building, got to my office, thought about it, wrote him a letter back, and I haven't spoken to him since. Now, that's either here or there. Now, I will say this, on the streetcar, is there any of y'all got enough guts up there to put a motion on the floor to table this thing for at least a year, till we get some more information, investigation, anything on this thing, to find out where it's really going? Because at the present time, we're not doing anything. And I'd like to know something more about the man that does all the speaking for a streetcar. Somebody's getting something out of this, that's the bottom line, I know that much I can prove. I don't know exactly who all is getting it, I know some are. Would somebody up there make a motion that they table this thing until, for at least a year? Would you do that, Mr. Grenier? I saw your picture in the paper yesterday. Would you consider doing that? Just table it. I don't say get rid of it, I'm just saying, table the funding till some proper information's been put in.
Mr. Nelson, you've surpassed the three-minute.
You know, y'all do this every time I come up here. What are you all afraid of? Somebody's got to be afraid of it. Are you afraid, Mr. Couch?
Sir, thank you.
I kind of figured that. I might get in it myself.
Mr. Pettis?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Pettis, 1332 Northeast 54th Street, Oklahoma City. Earlier today, there was some discussion regarding the vacant abandoned and boarded-up buildings. There was some discussion regarding residential and commercials. One of the things I'd like for the council and the staff to discuss in their deliberations is the abandoned schools. The Oklahoma City School Board has sold most all of their schools, they're boarded up, they, most of them have been sold to private investors. And in this process of the timeline, and giving them the time to either fix it up or tear it down, I think there's going to need to be special attention to those buildings, because there's several of them in a lot of neighborhoods, and they can be just as detrimental as far as property values as a boarded-up house. So I hope that some of the individuals who bought some of those schools become involved in the dialogue, because that also affects the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I'm sorry, executive session. And we need to vote to go into executive session. Okay, all right. We will adjourn here and go into executive session. Yeah, we'll come back, and then adjourn.